Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Board member roll call. Mike Gardner.
Angie Rowling.
Harry Percy.
Bob Jarvis.
Approval of agenda. Approval of minutes. March 23rd, 2022, special select board meeting. March 24th, 2022, board of health meeting. March 24th, 2022, select board meeting. The warrants. Payroll dated 4/1/22. 4/8/22. 4/15/22. 4/1/22, accounts payable. Accounts payable 4/2/22. Accounts payable 4/8/22. Accounts payable 4/9/22. Accounts payable 4/15/22. We have a correspondence tonight. A couple of them actually. Cindy Legg has a letter of intent or interest for the development review board. Excess weight permits. The animal control officer under that, and our animal control officer is present. Thank you for coming. Dog census, trap neuter return program. The dog kennel. Transfer station increased discussion and possible surveillance of popular dumping sites. Municipal planning grant is 10. Paper of record discussion and change, possibly. The ARPA motion to take a standard allowance. The RFPs that we had put out. 14 is the town hall. Eric Marsola's project management proposal list of items, generator discussion decision. Tree removal. Front entry door privacy signs and procedures. Handyman RFP or hired physician. Executive session for personnel. Public comment interger.
So moved.
With the.
You were supposed to add.
Yep, so I was gonna bring the end up under discussion. That's okay. Do we have a second to approve the agenda?
Second.
All right, we need to add a liquor license in here. I guess we should have done that and approved it.
Can I suggest? Can you put your public comment before executive session? I feel like that's.
Make people wait through like the styling, you know. Yeah, that's a good point.
Sure, is it, um, so.
Sorry.
Let's make that, no, let's make that change.
I guess we probably should have, I would suggest that you have it before and then if there's any action, open it again.
So we'll have two public comment. That's a good, good suggestion.
I think that's, I think that's good.
So we'll have a public comment under 14F. I guess it would be. This point. The liquor license, let's put that as 7A. Excess weight permits and liquor license will do the same thing.
And one minor correction. On minutes, I think we, it's the, it's March 31st and two on the 24th, isn't it?
Uh, no, the board of health is the 24th and the select board, but there is one for the 31st and I don't know if it made it into the packet because we were still.
No, it's in the packet.
It is in the packet.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's wrong on the agenda.
There, uh, there was a regular meeting the 24th.
Correct.
The 31st, there should be a special.
Right, but aren't we approving the 31st, not the 23rd, right? My agenda says the 23rd.
I should say both. I think we're missing the 31st.
Oh, so we're missing one.
Missing one, yeah.
I didn't see one on the 23rd.
But if the minutes are in our packet, then we can add that as the special meeting on the 31st.
I haven't worked with the packet. Are they in there?
The 31st is in the packet.
Yeah, it is. I'm trying to find it, but I can't read it.
So under four, we'll add D, we'll add March 31st, 2022 minutes.
Special.
Uh, select board special meeting, sure.
How many since that week since we've had a. Doesn't seem like weeks.
Gross.
Should we add the liquor license under excess weight permits as 7A?
Andy, do you want to amend your motion with the changes?
Yes, I'll amend with the changes.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Approval of minutes. Minutes of March 23rd, 22. Special select board meeting.
So moved.
Any discussion, changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
March 24th, 22, board of health meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, changes, corrections?
Has it been 30 days? What are we today? No, it hasn't been 30 days.
No, because the, uh, the letter actually went out a little later.
Okay.
And it was supposed to, so.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained, will be.
March 24th, 22, select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
March 31st, uh, 22, select board meeting, special.
So moved.
Second.
Additions? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, warrants, payroll 4/1/22. $11,882.06.
Are you going to do it individual? Because of the one thing you have.
Yeah, yeah, because of that, yeah. We'll do the next two payroll together, but this one I'm going to do separate.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Payroll 4/8/22 for $99.67.52. Payroll 4/15/22 for $10,411.09.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, corrections, additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Accounts payable 4/1 of 22. Accounts payable 4/2/22. Accounts payable 4/8 of 22. $89.04.03. Accounts payable 4/9. $962. Accounts payable 4/15.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion, corrections, additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Uh, correspondence. We have a letter from Springer Law Office. Attorney in law. They're filing a petition for a modification that came to the planning commission. Modification to a wireless telecommunications facility at 684 Montgomery Road. This is just always, they always send this. Um, whatever, whenever a cell, cell company. It's a huge packet. I didn't read through this, but I have the other one. They just always send that to us for approval. Whenever they do something on the cell towers in town. It's a formality.
So I make a motion that we sign it?
Do we, do we have to sign it? Just an informational then.
Oh, we have to sign it because it's the contract.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't catch that.
Because they're amending the original contract.
Okay, I didn't catch that part. Second.
Better be safe than sorry.
Yeah, I don't know if we have to sign this to be honest with you, but we'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Any questions, corrections, additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have a letter of interest from Cindy Legg. She's been on the, uh, development review board, uh, for a number of years. She sent us a letter of interest to be appointed back to the development review board and they do have an opening.
Uh, and we have no other letters to.
No other letters.
Are we free to go ahead and nominate or do we need to allow more time?
I think we're free to. I think we're free to nominate, for sure.
I'll nominate Cindy Legg to be reappointed to the, to the development review board.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, excess weight permits. Uh, excess weight permit from Island Brothers. Excess weight permit from Casella Construction. Excess weight permit from Miles Lumber. These are all together.
Those are just the weights.
Yeah, that's just the weights. That's what I was looking at. Uh, those are the only three we have.
So moved.
Discussion, corrections, additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, 7A, the liquor license. Yeah, I'm using your term too, right? Okay, we have a liquor license for. Puddle Market and Deli.
I have to make sure there wasn't a couple. I'm the one that's in your hand.
There is one for the American Legion.
It's probably inside and outside, correct?
Yeah, there's usually two.
But it's usually two.
Yeah. Generally. Unless we've already done the inside one and went for the outside.
No, there's two. There's two. I was just, I went too far. The sticky was on too far in. There are two, one indoors and one out. And then. Outside consumption. Okay, so the, the, there's first class license for club to sell malt and. Venice beverages. Whatever. Uh, third class, uh, club license to sell spirits and liquors. And then the outside, um, outside consumption permit. Okay, so there's three for the Legion basically and that's over three of mine.
I motion we approve the liquor license for the Legion, all three.
We arguing separate?
Or should we do them separate? Do we need to do them separate?
Oh, we probably should.
All right, then, uh.
No, not, not the Legion. There's Puddle Market and Deli and then there's the.
Two for the Legion.
There's three for the Legion and two, or one for the Puddle Market and Deli. So there's four liquor licenses total.
Right.
I think we can do the Legion, all three, under one vote and we'll do Puddle Market and Deli under a separate vote.
Okay, so I, my, my motion was for the American Legion.
Yeah.
All three.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion for the Center Market.
Puddle Market and Deli.
Puddle Market and Deli.
Good second. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Brings us right into the animal control officer. You're up, Leonard.
Um, I'm gonna have to do this until we sign him.
Okay.
I won't take my phone.
What order is it?
You are dog census first and then trap neuter return.
Okay, dog census, as I've brought to you before, that it's a state law that we have to have it done every year and I don't think Puddle's ever done it. Um, so basically what it is, is that I have to go, somebody has to go through and obtain all, every dog information in town unlicensed. No rabies vaccination. The town has to have an entire list of every one of those dogs. And you should each have a copy of the law. There's a discussion about doing mailers or in person. I don't believe that the mailers would be effective because the town clerk mails stuff out all the time and they don't get returned half the time. They get thrown away. Uh, me going door to door, I think would make a very big difference in that whole situation.
And if I can add to that, we did some quick math. It's gonna be around $600 without posters to send mailers, which might not get us any response. 600 would get him about 40 hours going to door to door. Which could, could produce a much better result.
And the censuses do at the end of May.
I mean, and with the known licenses you already have.
That's 195, last I knew.
And you probably don't have to go door to door.
Nope, I can skip those.
That's what I'm saying, so you.
Do you have a rough idea on the approximate hours prior to the end of the close, what it's gonna take you?
I honestly don't know because it's all gonna depend on whether people are home. I'm gonna have to redouble back on those occasionally. But it would be great to have a rough idea of exactly how many dogs were supposed to have license in. I've been to a couple of different animal control calls that have nothing to do with the census at all. People are unaware that we even have an animal control officer. I've heard that I did not know I needed to license my dogs on several occasions. So with me going door to door, I can give people information and answer questions right there on the spot that a piece of paper can't do.
Do you have any concern about your safety?
No.
Things are different nowadays. They really are.
There's some.
Want me to wear a mask or?
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, bring a dog.
Bring my dog over here, you can. Throw a tennis ball the opposite way, shit on. But I'm not concerned about my safety.
And also you have a breakdown from Julie that tells you what we're bringing in on licenses. So if we.
That's included.
Encourage more people to license their dogs, it's gonna be bringing more money and more revenue.
Right, and, and that's kind of, you beat me to it, but that's okay. I was gonna say if we, every license that we obtain when you go out there. Comes back in and is gonna go back into your, which is where your, this is coming out of your budget, the animal control officer budget, so to speak. I don't know if there's enough money in there to do it, but whatever, we still have to do it, so. It'll, we'll recoup some of that money that we spend on doing this and it has to done, you got a couple of weeks, three weeks to get it done.
Yep.
But on the flip side of it, it's never been done as far as I know, so. I mean, I'm comfortable with having you going out and doing the dog census on a door to door.
Moving forward, I mean, actually. You know, going out and doing it this year, is this something that has to be required yearly?
Yes.
Is moving forward, can we add it to, um, voting? Like, add a piece of paper at the polls for people to fill out when they're voting?
My only concern about.
Is that allowed to do?
My only concern about that is that there are dishonest people out there who say, I don't want to pay for a dog to be licensed. I can just put on a piece of paper zero and I've got five dogs out in the backyard.
Also, some, a lot of people don't vote.
Right.
And the other thing that this is gonna do is this, you get more people, because they have to have them licensed, they have to have their vaccines.
Yes.
And that for, makes the town safer as far as there's an altercation or whatever.
I'm all for it. I, I don't think it's an extraordinary amount of money to get it done and I think there's a chance that we recoup our money anyway, or, or a significant portion of it. All right, who wants next TNR? Do we need to vote? We should vote on that.
Yeah.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for Leonard to conduct his dog census on a door to door basis.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I was gonna amend, just.
Give an hour cap.
No, um, if for some reason there is a situation that could create an altercation. Backup and I wanted to give him authority to contact sheriff's department if he needed to take it.
Make another motion.
So, just to amend the motion that.
Well, just make another motion, don't.
When you're done?
Yeah. Yeah, just.
Just.
We voted on that one, didn't we?
Yeah.
So just, just add a motion, Jamie. I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion that, um, if Leonard. Encounters a. Less than friendly person, that he has authority to contact the sheriff's department to finish his census.
Second.
Well, I'll, I'll make the motion, sure. Any more discussion, questions?
Well, just, I'm not sure how official that is, but the threshold ought to be somewhat higher than less than friendly.
Well.
I was trying to be nice, Bob, a little bit correct.
How about, how about, how about a threatening?
Yeah, and, and in his best judgment, in Leonard's best judgment.
I was just gonna ask, uh.
Yes.
Like, what defines threatening?
Right, well, that's.
Best judgment.
That's what I'm saying.
You're a big guy and you're used to people. I'm sure if you felt uncomfortable, you would know.
Probably take quite a bit, Bob, you're saying. No, that's fine. I, you, you have a good point, Jamie.
And with the, with the dog census too, a lot of people are very happy to see me out there doing stuff like this too.
Right.
Yep.
So.
You always get that 1%.
Yep. Okay, so next is TNR.
No, they have to vote?
Again.
No, you didn't.
We didn't vote on.
You didn't vote on either one.
Yeah, we voted on, on the first one. Right?
No, you didn't make it. You stopped the motion. He was gonna amend it in discussion, so you guys gotta vote on both.
I thought we did.
No, we voted on.
Yeah, we voted on the first one.
Yes, to give him the authority to go door to door.
All right.
And then we made a second.
I felt like that didn't happen, but okay.
Yeah, we voted on that.
Second one definitely didn't.
The second, the second motion was definitely not voted on, you're correct. Um, any more discussion on whether or not Leonard can. Or whether Leonard has the authority in a threatening situation. Um, to contact the sheriff's department. That's the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now you go.
Now you go. You've been trying to.
TNR program? Yep.
Okay, so, I'll grow Puddle, mostly in trailer parks. We have a very bad feral cat situation. Um, in Green Mountain Mobile Home Park, there's been a white van spotted in there several times where they go into the trailer park, open a door, and six, seven cats come running out. They're just dumping them at random. I've seen sick cats. I've seen kittens running around loose all over the place. It doesn't make a very healthy environment for either animal or people. With cats going under trailers and defecating, urinating. It's not good for breathing. It's not good for the cats. They get sick, they give it to other cats and there's so many. We're, we're, I don't want to use the word pandemic, but it's what it feels like. So I got a, I got in contact with the second chance and they have a TNR program, which is trap neuter return. So basically what it is, is I trap the cats. I bring them to them. They prefer, they perform surgery on them to fix them, fix or spay or neuter. Later that day, I have to go back, pick up the cat and then return it to where I found it. So we're not doing anything for the health aspect of the cat. We're just making sure that they can't reproduce anymore, which is a big problem that we have in trailer parks.
Did we happen to get the plate number on that?
I don't know. I, I've told the person that I talked to to try to get it in a non-confrontational way. Um, and they'll be in contact with me if it does happen again, but it's already happened. We've already got the cats.
Right.
So the cost of the surgery is $10 a cat.
Do we know roughly how many cats?
Probably six.
I, I would put it high 50s.
There's a lot.
Being Alta Gardens, Green Mountain and a couple of other ones.
Doesn't even pay for one cat if you took one.
I have a feeling that this is something you could put out a small fundraiser for and you'd get some citizens given some money towards this.
Cause you and off, also need help.
Yeah.
You'll sit, you're like gonna sit, like have a heart traps and then, yeah.
They produce them, right?
Well, they, they have some traps, but I should probably have traps on hand anyway with my job. And there is a special trap that specializes in catching feral cats. It's called the tomahawk roundhouse. So it's a round trap and the door swings on the inside and sets the set plates. The cat has to go in around the door. And then hits the plate, the door shuts, slams it on top of it, not on top of it, but shuts tight.
Behind it.
And it can't open it. It's not like they have a hearts where if they scramble longer than 10 seconds, they can get themselves out.
Yeah.
You can't do it with tomahawks.
I find that, I'm sorry. A very special machine.
I've done my homework.
It's important, yeah.
I think it's a great program.
I think it's, I think. I think, I think the fundraiser idea is, is an excellent idea. I think, I think that what I'd like to do is, um, I'd like to make a motion that we go through with the trap neuter. Or entertain a motion with the TNR program, trap neuter return. I'd like to put it on our website. And all over Facebook that this is what we're doing and, um, we're looking for donations, um, so it doesn't come out of, you know.
Sponsor a cat.
Yeah, sponsor a cat, Facebook. You know, if we got a couple hundred bucks, we got a couple hundred bucks. I, you know, whatever it is.
They would actually find a home.
I actually have a couple of programs in line for any feral cat that's not claimed. Which is why the kennel will be so nice when I get it, that I can actually keep the cat there for a couple of days. And they're willing to help me find, uh, homes for feral cats.
So I think, I think that's something that we should, um. I think that's something we should really try to promote on our, on our public pages, on our social media pages. Okay?
Yep.
And then. So, you know, I'll entertain a motion for the TNR program.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion, questions?
And the, and the cost is, we're gonna try to raise money, but then what about the cost is gonna be?
$10 a cat. You said roughly around $50 for the, or 50 cats.
Right, so, so should we, I mean, what if, I mean, uh, not that I don't trust your estimates, but what if it turns out to be 150 cats? I mean, it, it's hard to tell how many cats there are. Do we put a cap on it? Maybe an annual cap or something along those lines to, to make sure that we're not. That it's within reason, right?
I think that's a great idea, Bob, to put an annual cap. So, so look, just for argument's sake, let's say we put a annual cap of $1,000. And this, Leonard catches 55 cats.
Right.
He still uses $450 to work with basically for another 45 cats. And I'm just being hypothetical, you know, just throwing numbers out there, that's all. Not that, not that I'm advocating for $1,000, I'm just. I'm, I'm just.
Well, the thing is.
I think that's a great idea.
And the other thing about it is if, uh, if, if the theory is correct, and I hope it is, and it sounds, it sounds pretty reasonable, but that means every year it ought to be going down. Because cats.
Yes, right. Yep.
Right.
And I've seen this program work pretty well in other parks in Huntington.
Okay, that's good.
Got a price on the.
Uh, roughly?
Yeah.
Well, I don't have it in front of me.
I didn't know if you had.
They're about $140 a piece. But that would come out of my budget.
No, I understand that, but I'm gonna want to take and make sure we get some kind of labeling system and, like you say, you got it on the website. That way people won't mess with them.
Yeah.
Hopefully people.
And I would.
So do you want to amend the motion with a cap, an annual cap?
Can we do it?
A hundred cats a year is good.
Yeah, amend the motion.
I'll amend my motion with a cap of 100 cats.
And it's a.
Per year.
And to be clear, it's a hundred, it's a hundred cats at 10 bucks a cat, but, uh, but the, uh, the donations.
Could exceed that.
Well, right, but we need to be, what I was gonna suggest is the, the donations reduce the $1,000 rather than increase the number of cats.
Yes. Offset, you want.
Yeah, I want to offset the thousand, so we'll spend up to 1,000 if we don't get any donations. But we don't have, we, we're not necessarily gonna spend 1,000. If we get donations, we might end up spending, if we get 500, then we'll, we'll spend 500, they'll spend 500. Just to, just to be clear on, on where that goes.
And this is a program that they offer yearly, correct?
Yes.
They've been doing it for a while.
Okay. So I amended my emotion for 100 cats.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Dog kennel.
That's me.
Tagging her in.
Yeah. So number one, I'm gonna start with, I am going to offer to project manage this. Um, Leonard does not have the time. And apparently I do. I just keep, can't leave.
He volunteered.
Can't leave. Well, I want to help you because it's, otherwise I have a feeling it's not gonna do it. So, um, I am gonna offer to project manage. I will ask for action on that at the end, but here's what we have discussed. We have three possibilities of how this can go and where this can go. We want to discuss all of them with you. Talk about the pros and cons of them and then set up kind of like a hierarchy of priorities here on how we want to go forward. Um, so, uh, because we will need to put a down payment on this, um, structure. It is built in factory and, and brought on a trailer bed, completely built. It's only the connections that need to be done. So, and there's, there's, okay, so number one, our number one choice. So, and there's, there's, okay, so number one, our number one choice of where to put it, we think, is the town hall property right over there on the other side of the town hall. Um, there's part of the, one of, so one of the considerations we would have to do if we have it there is that because we already have stormwater permitting here, we would probably have to evaluate if this, like I don't, it, it already has permitting. We may have to add it into that permitting like that.
Yeah, amend the permit.
We made it to amend the permit because it's not just like a, a shed, like we can just go to the zoning administrator, I don't think. Because we're already permitted and we already have runoff, blah, blah, blah.
We're probably, we probably should just check into that no matter.
That's what I'm saying. Right. So that's the one, that's a consideration. So, some of the pros is that it's very easy access for Leonard, but also for other staff. If for something happens, he can't get here. There's a ton of us here. We can go in and throw a bowl of water and a bowl of dog food and the dogs would get lots of love from women on their lunch break. So, um, also, um, it's all ready to go for electric and water. All of that trenching has already been done. Those connections exist. It's, um, also it's not electrified unless there are animals in there. It's not heated unless the animals are in there. Um, so it's low budget on that. So that's number one. One of the downsides we have, we have concerns about that we have neighbors and.
Only the neighbors, but the park. If there's kids down there.
I have sixteen panels of kennel fencing that came with the old dog houses that are ten feet long and then anywhere from six to eight feet high that I can completely encase.
We would double fence it so that there's a fence around the structure. So that's.
My concern was the dog seeing the activity of the.
Oh, and then barking.
And barking.
Well, there is an option that I picked for both, well, an option called guillotine dog doors, which means if I want the dog to stay inside, I just let go of the handle, door shuts, dog stays inside, can't go out to the run.
So there's, I mean, there's options. There's, there's, but that's a possibility, right? That there'd be barking and, and, um, now there's not always dogs here. So that's a good thing, you know, but when there is a dog there, that's, that's the downside.
I can just see the kids skateboarding, you know, the guys have the skateboards and they're going back and forth.
Okay, so.
Barking.
Number two, the numbers, the number two preference is town highway. Um, now Joel did bring up that he thought that MSHA would preclude us being able to put it there. I do have a note out. That's the mining and safety people. Um, there's forty acres there. Like I don't, I, I have a feeling that we can get a variance from MSHA and I do have a note out to them regarding that.
I don't think that the actual, uh, I want to say transfer sta- not transportation, the building site.
Mm hmm.
The, the MHA slate covers the gravel pit.
Yes.
That doesn't cover, that's, so, um, if you were going to put it on the, the roadside, then it, that would be much next. Because there's.
Apparently because the, apparently, well, this is just what Joel said. So I'm, I'm speaking to MSHA about it. Apparently because there's access through there for mining work, that you do have to have variances and clearances for new things like that. I, this could be misinformation, but I, that's just what, that's one of the boxes that we have to check. Okay? Um, the benefit of this, there also is access to water and electric there. So, um, the benefit of this is it's more remote. You're not going to be disturbing people in the same way. Um, so that's, that is, that, that's the next preference. The third one is transfer station. However, the location would be further away. We'd probably have to trench. Here we brought maps for everyone.
Tom and I.
Yeah.
Talked about this. And Tom's here to back me up.
I'll go to slide in here for a second. So, we have, our building's right here, the, the tipping shed. And we have electric at this end. Okay, right in here. And that would, that would have to run a conduit underground over to this site is down below. We can't, we can't do anything behind the building because we have to get the trucks in there, change out all the dumpsters and stuff. So, that can't, we can't use that. And I really don't want to get over here just getting too far away from the building. But we have no water. There's no water at all.
No.
I mean, we have water. I want to use it.
Well, if you pay, so you'd be paying for that. Like that'd be an extra expense to bring in the, the, the longer electric trenching and the, um, the water.
There, isn't there electric down at the, uh, by the other sheds where your.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the, the power actually comes into the shed. It's a two hundred amp service entrance. It only got like three or four breakers in the whole thing. You know, but it has a sub panel, goes up to the, our, our office is actually a sub panel off of that. So that, that pole down there is, is actually where, where it comes in.
Right.
So, and the meter's down here on the, on the tipping shed. So this, this would go from the tipping shed across that, that parking lot and stuff. We'd have to, we'd have to get dug down, get some, uh, conduit down there and we could run it down. Now, that being said, we have power, we could run a couple circuits. If he had to come in and had a, had a, uh, five hundred gallon or two, even a two hundred and fifty gallon tank on the back, you know, and a small pump. I mean, he could do, he could do, plug it in right there and it, and it'd be a, be a piece of cake.
So, so I have a question on, on, um, using the transfer station down where they go in to grab the dumpsters.
It's going lower.
On the other side.
Right.
On the other side. We have another spot too.
Would, when we put the power in, Tom, would we have to cross any of the new blacktop?
No.
Okay.
That is not blacktop to the back area.
That's.
Yeah, that's what.
Well, that's, so now.
Now, if you're going to do it, now's the time to do it.
Okay, that was my, you know, I hate to tear up new blacktop. So if, if we were to say we were going to the transfer station.
Right.
My opinion would be to go underground.
Right.
Borer. To bore under rather than cut the new blacktop.
Oh, because everything, all these things, all these trucks are going up, you know, you know, and they start picking up the, the dumpsters are pretty high.
Yeah.
And I, I talked with Leonard here on Sunday. I, I caught him in here when I brought the timesheets in. And we, we kind of discussed this, but it'd be down here someplace.
Yeah, no, I, I, but you know, as long as we don't have to cut new blacktop because I wouldn't want to do that, I would want to bore under the black.
Yeah, right.
Which is, which is just, it's not impossible, obviously. It's just an increase.
Extra.
It's just an increased cost.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and our town crew can't do that because we don't have a bore.
Right.
So we'd have to hire that out. Whereas just regular underground power, we had to come in to put that in.
Yeah, we, we could throw that in.
That's right. That's right.
Okay.
That was my, that was all my own question.
So that's.
So that, that's, that's an option. Uh, and we're only there three days a week. It's not going to bother us at all.
Right.
You know? And, you know, the only person that could hear would be, uh, Jake Barney over there, built the new house on the other side of the, uh, uh, his gravel pit.
But there's still a good tree line right.
I was like, there's trees up there, right?
My question to Leonard, um, because my hope is that you stay as the animal control officer long term.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
We're going to give them a raise if we care.
Number one, you do a good job. So, you know, there's, there's a couple of reasons for that. What is your preference? On, on, because ultimately ninety-nine percent of the time, you're the person dealing with the dog going into the shed and you're the one that was feeding him and watering and taking care of. Dogs, cats, or whatever other animals we have.
If we could figure out the water situation, I think transfer station would probably be the best bet because it's two minutes from our house. I live on Pine Hollow Road, so it's just a.
Yep.
Quick shot right there.
More isolated.
It's definitely more isolated. People aren't going to mess with it there. They, they think it's a landfill. They're not going to go down there screwing around with stuff. Um.
Well, I think you probably still would do your double fence.
No, I'm, I'll definitely.
That's what.
Definitely doing security.
If you put your water tank in the right spot, you don't need a pump. You can just use pressure.
Yeah, we have a water expert.
I know.
Put it in the right spot.
Well, and also, water tanks are not that expensive, right? Like we're talking, we're like, this is also, if we can't, that could be a small arc ask as well. To put it in the right location where it has longevity to be able to be and not, you know.
Well, you may have to extend the building enough to store a set, well, the twenty-five or thirty gallon tank. So it's in a heated environment.
I, I.
I'm just throwing it out there.
The way, the way I'm looking at this right now, um, because I'm not trying to rush through anything at all, but I don't, you know, I'm like, because I've had you guys here all night. I, I think our number one option right now, the way I look at this, is to try to make the transfer station work.
I agree. I like the transfer station.
Try to make the water situation so that it's not a cumbersome thing for him to deal with either.
What are the numbers on the PFFA there? Like, like how high?
We don't have any wells that we can drink out.
No, I understand, but what is the level?
If you get out of some of those P H O wells, that's a six hundred.
Okay, um, because there's also the option of, uh, UV filtration, um, to actually just, you could also get a filter to like kill the.
We're not going wells.
Oh, I thought you already had a well.
No.
No, I, I think.
Oh, the test wells, okay.
I think our, right, I think our best option is to come up with.
Oh, a tank. Okay.
A.
I thought there was a well, but it just.
Least cumbersome thing for you to come up with or, you know, that's going to be the easiest for you. So if we have to purchase a hundred gallon plastic tank.
Yeah.
That slides in the backyard or pick up when you need to fill it. And then in the winter time, we need to have a heat blanket on a tank over there so that it doesn't freeze.
Or it can store inside the building itself, the heat on.
That's what I'm saying. You just estimate what you need for. Exactly. I, I, you know, to me, that, that's our best option right now. It's probably our least, um.
Disruptive.
Disruptive, obtrusive.
Yeah.
Yes.
Option because I, I like the option to have it in right here because on, on the town hall property, I really like that because I think number one, I think it's a really nice looking building and it's good. And it's, you know, would add to what's going on here. But I think there's that potential for the neighborhood to really be disrupted if you have a dog that doesn't.
It's good if you're relaxed with the park. It's a good point too.
Some dogs bark all night long if they're not.
No matter what.
If they're not at their house.
They're in the strange place.
There's no, and there's no trees really.
I touch my house.
Because they're not at, they're not at their home.
Oh, yes, sir.
So I, I would think that the best thing to do is to try to make the, make the transfer station work.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Okay, so then if that's the case, and these are the three asks I have for you tonight is one, I'd like for, I'm asking for you to, um, give me permission to project manage this. Um, I don't think it's going to take a lot of time, but I think that he needs the, the administrative support there and Tara will help me too with payments and et cetera, et cetera, the administrative pieces. Um, but I'll do all this legwork of finding out what we need where, et cetera, et cetera. And then, um, you've done site preference, so I would say I need you to vote on a site preference. And then I need you to approve the pulling of the trigger and making a deposit on the building of the building. Because it's a twelve week, it's a twelve week overturn.
There's a couple of, in, in the packet, there's a couple of, I, I assume there are options, right?
There are options because.
Yeah, Leonard can speak to those.
Um, when I was originally went to Tim to set up the vote for the amount of money on what we're going to need, I only put in the amount for the building itself. I didn't take into consideration the electric, gravel, all that other stuff. So I didn't know.
Well, it's pretty hard. Didn't know what to do with that. Leave them all going.
Yeah, I, I was at complete loss of that situation. So the twelve by twenty-four is the original kennel that I would like to get. And that's the grand total with all the options at the bottom. Um.
So the total is thirty-six, two fifty, correct?
Yeah. That's without an electrician coming in, running the wire, hooking it up, no plumber.
Didn't we vote thirty-eight thousand?
Yeah, that leaves us seventeen fifty on the budget.
Yeah.
Thirty-eight thousand is a valid article.
Thirty-eight thousand is a valid article, but to his point, that, that's going to cover, that's going to cover the building.
Just the building with the options.
Uh, the tie into everything else. And I want to remind everybody, as we learned from the budget, from the budgeting exercise, is somewhere around six to seven thousand dollars is a percentage point on taxes. Uh, a, a percentage point of the select board's primary spending, the general fund.
Right. So I, I guess what I was thinking about Bob here is that we, okay, the total cost that he has here for this twelve by twenty-four is thirty-six, two fifty, which leaves us seventeen fifty out of the thirty-eight thousand dollars that was voted by the taxpayers already.
If there's no under, unproceeds, and I, I think there's going to be. What I was going to suggest, if, now the difference between the twelve by eighteen and twelve by twenty-four is four dogs versus three dogs.
Yes. And it's not as big on the inside in the middle. I, I couldn't find the floor plan for the twelve by twenty-four. But there's an actual space in the middle between all the boxes.
Right.
So that I can actually maneuver around.
Yeah.
The twelve by eighteen literally has a three foot feed room where I walk in the door and I have three feet of space and then there's three, three dog runs.
Well, and, but from a cost standpoint, this gives us more, a, a lot more.
Yep.
To be able to, to, to.
That's why I, I gave.
For the unforeseen.
The lower opt, I gave, the other option is for that one.
But, but as far as a safety point goes, the individual working in there, having that pull.
And the other.
When the dogs in and out and.
The other factor I also have too is I have a lot of equipment at my house. I, I have a lot of, I have dog crates are donated to me. I have all my regular equipment. I've got the temporary winter kennel that is in my garage. Um, so with the floor run, even if I wasn't going to use the full floor, I could use one of those boxes for storage.
Now, the twelve, twelve by twenty-four is the whole enclosure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tom, um, can you give me an estimate on of footage from, um, the, the power, the available power to where the building would be located?
Well, if we keep it, if we keep it up towards the panel, we can always take it straight across.
Yeah, just.
We, we have our, we have our grass clippings and stuff down over, we push them up, we can push them to the, uh, to the south.
Find a cough trap?
But if we, if we do it here, we, that would go straight across there. And, I mean, I could measure tomorrow. I, I.
No, ballpark. Just, just roughly. Give me a rough estimate. Hundred feet, thirty feet?
Oh, less, probably a hundred feet will do it.
Hundred feet will do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so a hundred feet and we're going to bury three inch conduit. I, I just did this.
What's, what's the, uh, power requirements for that? You know?
Um, and so as soon as.
I'm, I'm going to use three inch conduit right now. We probably don't need three inch because of the size of the wire. But I know what the cost roughly, what the cost of three inch conduit is right now. It's eighty bucks for ten feet roughly.
Yeah.
The last time I bought some. So that's, if we're going a hundred feet, uh, you know, it's eight hundred bucks for the conduit to get us over. We're not going to bury a water line.
No.
But whatever, you know.
You have to, you have to be down eighteen inches minimum.
Right, so, uh, Joel just sent me a message, the town can do the site work no problem whatsoever. They can, we have the sand to bury the, everything in, to do everything correct. Um, you know, to do our, to do our site work. So our site work basically is our road crew's time.
Right.
Okay.
We're, we're going to have to extend the road, uh, uh, because it's just kind of, kind of overgrown and stuff and we might have to cut it off, make it a little shorter.
And that's something that, that, you know, we can do there too.
Save us plowing and stuff in the winter too.
So.
Because then there are quite a ways it cuts around, but we might be able to just cut it off.
I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that we compare apples to apples and don't cut ourselves short for the sake of a dollar that we don't have to spend. So if we're a hundred feet or less, that's approximately eight hundred dollars for three inch conduit. I don't think we need three inch conduit, but I'm just.
Just.
Just because I know what that costs.
Yep.
Um, and then wire, I, I don't know what wire is going to be because I just don't know what size.
So I believe one of the benefits of doing it here as opposed to on our site that is already cited and permitted and is small is that this can be done through zoning and DRB alone.
Right.
You won't need to go to.
Right.
Now, I think, I think I'm going to have to go through, uh, well, I, no, I don't. I, I have to go through my permitting for the whole facility, not for, not for this closed landfill. But for here, I think I'd have to get, uh, something with from, uh.
Is there a cost for those permits?
No.
Okay.
No cost.
So it's just, it's just paperwork.
Yeah, what, what it is, what it is, I'll, I'll call somebody. Unfortunately, you know, the last time I was here, we found out that I was going to die. And that's, that's the guy I would have called. But, uh.
So I think, I, I guess my point is with the twelve by twenty-four, it's the board's budget, not mine. Just doing, make sure we make up, make the most educated decision. The twelve by eighteen triple dog kennel is twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars, which leaves us eighty-four, forty-five left over from the thirty-eight thousand that, that the taxpayers voted on. Um, the twelve by twenty-four four box kennel that Leonard is advocating for is thirty-six, two fifty, leaving seventeen fifty of, of the thirty-eight thousand dollars. I'm very confident that we can get the power into the building for the seventeen fifty.
Mm hmm.
Or, or really close to that. Now I'm sure, as Bob said, I'm sure there may be some other incidental things um, that we would have to, you know, come up with or whatever. But with our road crew being able to do the site work, that'll save us, you know, a huge amount of money too, so. But with our road crew being able to do the site work, that'll save us, you know, a huge amount of money too, so.
And we were talking, well, probably three to look, no more than five yards of concrete.
Nope.
We're scrawled.
Oh, yeah.
Stone, stone.
Three, you have to do one foot past the width, one foot past the length, six inches of three quarter inch crush down.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds good.
So I wish, okay.
So the other thing is that we can um uh, I just lost my train of thought, I had something to say about. Oh, then I would consider, I would suggest to you um purchasing the, a water tank um by our department.
Yeah, and that that could be separate from the, from this thirty-eight thousand dollar budget they were trying to, building and power to the building.
Here's a bit of a water tank. I wouldn't mind getting one of at least a hundred and twenty-five gallons that we could pressure wash up, up above there.
Uh, you read my mind, you read my mind.
And I, and I have an equipment budget, so we get a pump, you know, we get a, we get an electric pump and a tank.
You read my mind because what I was gonna come to you, I'm glad you're here, because I was gonna ask you if we.
Do any water?
If we, if we were to purchase a tank for Leonard to use for his animals, because I'm not gonna go to the dog control.
Attaboy.
I'm going in.
Attaboy.
It took me a while, but I'm there now, okay?
You're training Mike.
Yeah, no, he trained me, um, he yelled at me enough times. So, so you know, rather than cut ourselves short on a tank, if we bought a hundred and fifty gallon tank where we could actually use it to pressure wash things at the transfer station.
Oh, I love that. You, I mean, I got so much stuff down there, so dirty for years.
So let me ask you, let me ask you this, could the, could the tank and a, and a pump and whatever we need to come out of your budget?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, but.
I would.
I, then I, then, you know, I I think that really helps us a ton right there. What do you think, Bob?
I think so, yeah, I I agree.
Uh, I mean, I bought, we bought the, the John Deere and the other stuff, you know, with the, with them and the broom we bought with them. Why not do this for the animal control?
I can see, I can see multiple uses for a um, I can see multiple uses for having this, having a setup like this, okay? I can see multiple uses where if something, it's a road crew needed to, to forever, whatever reason, needed a pressure washer on the side of the road, look at a piece of equipment.
Well, somebody analyze stuff.
That's right, no, that's right, wherever you add a mobile thing, I I think, I think this is something that we could use. I think it's money wisely spent, and I I believe we have some tanks that we might even be able to use right now. Joel, you know, has possibly some tanks that we can use.
Yeah, why don't we, you know, you know, the ones they use for the magnesium chloride and stuff?
No, I, I think he has some for potable water.
Very good. I will find out.
That's right, so I, I, you know, I think moving forward, we can beat this thing on my mind. I'm moving forward, I I think the, the transfer station looks like, you know, in my opinion, it's the place to go with it. I think it's time to get this project on, on board and and get moving forward with it.
I agree. Okay, so.
I want to take a motion to um have Rebecca be the project manager of the new dog kennel.
So moved.
Second it.
Any discussion questions? All in care?
Aye.
Pose, carry. I'll entertain the motion for the dog kennel to be located at the transfer station in a location agreed to with Tom and Leonard.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second it.
Thank you.
Any questions, discussions?
Good teamwork, very good teamwork.
All in favor?
Aye.
So now, actually, because if you've made me the project manager, I can just do this. Um, I can just start doing it, but you guys need to decide which.
What size?
We need to decide which size.
Yes.
Um.
You want, is it twelve by thirteen?
The twelve by twenty-four is the one.
Twelve by twenty-four, I make a motion that we order the twelve by twenty-four four box layout kennel.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, questions? That's for a cost of thirty-six thousand.
Yep.
Thirty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, is that a delivered cost?
Yes.
Thirty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars delivered with a uh, so they can amend that motion with a deposit to be sent um next week in accounts payable.
I agree to that motion. I'll amend my motion then.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
Um, oh, sorry, just gotta bring it up before we vote on it. Um, remember that was approved, that was approved by the voters for up to thirty-eight thousand. Um, but that's the, the fiscal, the next fiscal year that starts July first. Um, can we go ahead and send it to the deposit now?
Would you say it was twenty, or twelve weeks old?
Twelve weeks.
Yeah.
When you order it, it'll do.
Twelve weeks.
You can approach, you take the, the deposit from one place.
Right.
And then replace it with the line at the next, in July one, at next fiscal year. What is the deposit, Leonard?
I, I don't know.
That, you can make a difference on that, about where you take it from as well, so um, can you quickly look that up?
You, I think they're closed right now.
I didn't know if it was on this or not.
I don't think it's, I don't know if it's on the website or not, I'm gonna look it up.
Who's the, uh, who, who are we getting it from?
Horizon Structures.
Horizon?
Yeah, they're out of Pennsylvania. They have fantastic reviews. Family owned company too, I don't know if that helps or not, but I love all the.
I, I gotta be honest, Leonard, um, everything that you you've dropped to the boards since you've been the animal control officer has been, is my opinion, well thought out and well researched out. Um, so from my standpoint as a select board member, I'm gonna trust your opinion on this and I'm not gonna question which building to get. It's just my opinion.
I appreciate it.
I wasn't questioning the.
No, I know about, no, I understand that. I, I, I know, I know, I know what you were questioning about, I.
Twenty-one thousand versus twenty-eight thousand.
No, I know, I, I get that. No, I, I, and I, I, I was just, I was talking to Leonard, you know, family owned company or whatever, I, I.
Oh, I like that.
I think that should go without saying, you know, from our standpoint.
And possibly not needing a separate shed to store things in with a larger unit.
I understand, it gives, you know, one, it's, 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 it's what the taxpayers of the town and pounder wanted.
And it's not just for dogs either, like I said.
Animal control.
When we start T and R, sometimes we're gonna have cats left over. Might be storming out the day, I gotta bring it back. I'm not gonna throw a cat, just had surgery out in the middle of a snowstorm. I'll bring it to the shelter, or if I got loose chickens again, they can go in there too.
Maybe a goat or two.
And a goat or two.
Goats are in albatross right now.
Yeah, I'm not finding, I'm not finding the.
So let's, let's, let's amend, let's, let's retract that motion and um, let's retract that motion and just go with the motion to purchase the twelve by twenty-four four box.
Okay.
Um, at this time, and then we'll do another motion on the, um, figure out the finances separate.
Alright, so moved.
Couple outlets.
I can, I need to know.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So now let's talk about the uh financial part of it.
Okay, I'll find out.
I, I think, I think what we can do.
Guys, the cross talk on the video comes up really loud, just so you know, like really loud.
Um, I think what we can do on, on the, if you so choose as a board, I think we could authorize Rebecca and Tara to pursue options for the deposit as far as where the funds could come from until July first until the next fiscal year, that was a great point, Bob. And um, what we can do after that, whether we authorize them to.
Ask Ellen as far as line items, line item options.
Well, I'm thinking more along, I'm thinking more along the percentage horse barns. You know, if it's a, if it's a fifty percent deposit.
Right.
We gotta come up with eighteen grand.
Right.
Give or take.
Ten or twenty.
If it's a ten percent deposit, we're coming up to thirty-six hundred.
Right, and a bit.
Okay, there's a big difference between a fifty percent and a ten percent or whatever deposit.
Right, I can't find it in the present pay.
In my opinion, if it's a fifty percent deposit, I mean, I know we're at the, I know we're at the middle of April right now, and we only got a couple months, two and a half months to go before in the next fiscal year anyways. But if we have to come up with, you know.
Yeah.
Tom has a good idea. He also said, was saying that the transfer station, um, what would be the maintenance line?
Building fund.
The building fund, um, it could be borrowed out of that, he was saying. Um, it costs late since it's going there anyway, and then it could be repaid from the.
Come July first.
Then I.
There we go.
I don't know who settles that.
Yeah, I think so.
They might have, thank you.
No, that's a big ass, I'm sure.
It's a great idea.
You're my Superman tonight.
Stands for sure.
You're my Superman tonight, man, you're making everything warmer.
That, that's, I, I, I don't have a problem with that, I don't bother, remember, for sure.
No, because we're gonna pay you back.
Right.
It's gonna come back, that's right, it's gonna come back on July first.
It's like we're taking it and never giving it back.
So that'd be half.
I, I can't imagine, I can't imagine that it's a, that it's a.
Hear that it's that much.
Maybe a twenty-five percent deposit would be my guess, maximum.
Yeah, we'll see.
Little.
So, you know, that would be my guess.
Seven, eight grand.
But I would, that's what I would say about the twenty-five percent, I I would think. Um.
Alright.
I'll entertain a motion to um authorize the expenditure from the transfer station building fund, building maintenance fund.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not doing anything with it uh.
It's just.
It's really, really not a lot, so we're not paving the rest of it. Next year, hopefully we'll have enough to pave the rest.
To be repaid um next fiscal year.
So moved.
Second it.
Any more discussion? Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah.
All in favor? You have a dog kennel in a way.
Good stuff.
Animals.
Alright, so we'll.
I'm very happy right now.
Oh, it says dog kennel in that thing right there.
It does say dog kennel.
So that's why I said it. But, but the town and pounder has a place for animals to be taken.
Animals, animals. I'll talk, I'll walk and talk, I'll talk, are you leaving now, because I'll talk to you, okay? We'll take it out of the main.
Very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I, I do, I do the best I can in the town.
Hey, that's awesome.
Thank you, have a good night, thank you.
Thanks, Leonard. Um, I'm blasting back there.
Transfer station.
Transfer station increases possible surveillance of popular dumping sites. So let's do that in two separate things, let's do um the, the surveillances or some separate. Something Terry and I brought up, but we put it there. Uh, let's do your increases.
I think the fifteen percent is gonna give us what we need to cover everything. I'm still a little concerned with these macros, I, I had it down there and the thing is twenty dollars. And I think the town's gonna have to kind of eat it up, we can use part time, so some of us, yeah. I can put that in with the free dump day type thing, you know, and use that. Because if we go, if we go to twenty dollars, I'm afraid we're gonna be picking them up for nothing and still paying them, that's the freight. You know, I was thinking more like fifteen, I just, I mean, I have to raise some, I mean, you know, we're giving away now, but. So, what, what, what'd you say?
I don't think we should lose money on them, I think we should, if you want, break even.
Um, well, we can't break even, we can't charge a forty dollars for them.
Right, as we always.
Forty dollars for one.
Transfer, the transfer stations forever is.
Some loads I get four hundred dollar uh uptick fee on it.
Operating at a deficit, deficit.
You know, that's, and that's what's, that's what's uh really hurting, and the first time we're gonna pay the additional uh money on the, on the, on the hauling, but we did get them to drop it down fifty dollars.
Yeah, that, and you said the tire cost is going up a lot, does that?
Tire cost went up, we got, we got rid of the tires last Wednesday. And they came in and took them, and the guy called me the next, called me on Friday and said, that's the last we're gonna give that price. The guy said, how do you get this price? I said, I don't know, they, they, it's always been this, you know, but now it's gonna jump up, he, he called me and told me.
My question, my question to you, because I forgot the exact numbers, it was basically by the time we figured in Casella and the hauling, it was a twenty-seven percent increase.
That's that.
Across the board.
That, that was before I got them to drop down the.
Fifty dollars.
The fifty dollars.
So what, what is, would.
About fourteen percent increase.
A fourteen percent increase.
I got, I got them down that much for.
For hauling and.
Yeah.
And.
Right, so what is, our, so what does that make our, our total increase becomes, because we have that fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five percent?
Yeah, well, the, the fifteen, yeah, yeah, the fifteen, the fifteen that I showed you actually covers the, the.
It does.
It covers it, it covers it, gives us a little.
Now that we have that, now that you got the other drop down.
Yeah.
Because initially, wasn't it twenty-seven?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, because that, that.
So my concern at that point, Tom, and I'll tell you exactly where I was going with this, but I, now that you've explained this tonight, my concern was if we only increase fifteen percent and the town has to pick up the other twelve percent.
Right.
Out of twenty-seven percent.
Well.
I was gonna go for a twenty percent increase, but if you're telling me the fifteen is covering everything, I'm totally fine with that.
We, we may have to have another small bump next year or something.
I'm, I'm sending that now though.
I'm still keeping everything on the quarters, I'm not gonna get down into nickels and dimes.
No, no.
I get enough of those turned in as it is, you know.
But Tom called Casella and harped on them on there, said your, your distance for delivering.
I'm, I'm totally comfortable with a fifteen percent increase, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I, I am.
I wasn't at first, I'll be honest, because that twelve percent was killing me.
Well, that's, that's why we have to come down here and talk about it.
Exactly, so, no, I'm, I'm, I'm totally fine with the fifteen percent.
I, I was very adamant with them, you know, and I thought that, well, if this is gonna be the case and we take that equipment, then we'll, we'll get uh all this stuff, we'll buy our own dumpsters.
Yeah.
You know, I said, you know, we're not gonna pay that much.
Right, right.
And, yeah, I thought, well, we can do that, or you know, we're gonna, gonna use, use truck, we got enough guys with CDLs that could drive it down there. Ron won't get another one, he said he's not, he's not.
What is the board's pleasure?
If Tom thinks it's sufficient, it covers everything, then I make a motion that we go with fifteen percent.
And the, and the mattresses go to fifteen dollars on those.
I, I would, whatever yard.
Whatever yard.
I, I just, I'm just afraid we're gonna see way too many.
The, the last proposal that you gave us was basically a fifteen percent increase in the mattresses and stuff are separate.
Right, I, yeah.
So I'm, I'm comfortable with.
We can do that now.
These proposed increases.
We had a, we had a alliance, uh, Solid Waste Alliance meeting yesterday, if I may, you know, change, change the subject a little bit. And uh, it looks like we're going to be getting a uh thirty by seventy prefab unit that we're gonna put up in Bennington for a permanent uh household hazardous waste facility. And of course, we got, there's a lot of permitting there, it's gonna go, but hopefully next year we can have that thing done, and we won't have to have all these uh, these, these uh events because they're very expensive. And, you know, well, it's like, like Angie, my, my assistant down there, hanging stuff up. Uh, and thank you for that, oh, I, I got the, I got the household hazardous waste ones that afternoon, so, so I'm probably gonna bring them down tomorrow and hang them, but uh, we have, they made a mistake, I mean, they, and I, I screamed bloody murder about this, about five or six years ago. They put Household Hazardous Waste Day and Green Up Day the same day, and they did it this year again. And I told them, I says, do not ever, ever, because Michael wasn't there. He left in, in uh December, end of December, Michael Baxter left, he retired. And uh, and I said, oh, don't you ever do that again, please, please, it really messes things up, you know? So uh, they're having that, but if we can, if we can get the, the the household hazardous waste facility done, then we won't have to have them, people will, they may have to pay something, I don't know. I don't know how it's gonna go for sure.
That was what was discussed, was it two years ago?
Yeah.
When we got, where they uh, basically put that, brought that forward.
Yeah, but uh, you know, they're, they're not taking, uh, household hazardous waste day, they're not taking any fluorescent tubes or batteries at all this year. Which is okay, I don't care, we take them all the time, so it's, it's not a big deal, you know, for, for the, the people at pound. You know, we take the batteries and we'll, we'll take the, we'll take the fluorescents. And uh, so, but, I mean, that's, that's the one, that's the one big thing out of the meeting yesterday that uh came out, so. And then one more thing, well, can I have the board's permission to hang a Ukrainian flag on the, on the building?
You have a United States flag down there?
You got a United States flag hanging up, probably, I would put this one on the building.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I just, but, because I, I gotta feel, we, we really need to show, you know, some support for these people, it's awful. My, my grandson has been over in Latvia, they, they back in Germany now, but they're rotating around in Europe, so.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it, I don't know what kind of backlash, but I guess it, it's up to us as a board to decide if we're ready for it, if there is any.
Yeah, if we got some communists, we might have backlash. I don't know. And I don't care if they don't like it.
I don't.
Yeah.
Without, I mean, of, of course, I'm on with everybody else on the same side of that, but, but are we setting a precedent?
Well, that was my other concern.
But the, the, that's my only concern. Once you set a precedent, then, then who do we say no to? Who do we say yes to? And what organizations?
My facility.
Well, that's what, I think that, that might be the, that might be the answer is that it's, it's, it's his facility.
Yeah.
I, I'm
The town, town prop.
Not opposed to that either, Bob.
Right.
I, I really am not opposed to that. I, you know, I think from
Well, I've got one out in front of my house, three foot by five. I got two of them.
I guess, um
The only reason I brought it up is there are flags flying on municipal buildings that I wholeheartedly disagree with and wouldn't want on there.
Well
Um, and not, not this one.
All right, well, hopefully not.
But uh, but, but that is happening and it's happening more and more. Um, so that's my only concern is setting a precedent.
If I want, you gotta allow them all.
Yeah.
That's the drawback.
Big approval of this one, you know, as a pointer.
I, I don't know if the board has, I don't know if the board has to approve it, to be a hundred percent honest with you.
Yeah, as I was speaking, I was hoping that the board didn't even have to.
Okay.
If you didn't ask, then they wouldn't
Well, that's good because we'll have to take it down now.
I think this is your
Yesterday afternoon, my wife said, well, it's better to ask forgiveness each now. Okay, all right. That's it, folks. It's all for me. Thanks, Leonard.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome, guys. Like players usual. I know you people don't get paid enough, I can tell you that.
It might be up to fifty cents an hour this year.
Do you want me to talk a little bit about the garbage?
Fifty cents an hour this year.
Um, yes, so it's, sorry, Tom's done. Let's move on to uh uh surveillance of popular dumping sites. So this is um, this is something that we'll, Executive Assistant Tara, talk about.
So um over the weekend, past week, my kids went down to the Powell Beach, which is down behind Stewart's. Um, the owners currently have the gate open, which it wasn't for quite a long time, so the kids are excited to go back from there. There is a lot of dumping happening. There are seven mattresses, TVs, you name it. I mean, brush piles. People are dumping wood, brush. Anything that they don't want to pay to get rid of, they're pulling down in there. Um, so the fear is obviously that the owner is going to close that off.
Because it is private property.
Because it is private property, but it's not just happening there. It's happening at just about every pull-off all over town or certain sites that you can kind of hide and dump things off, and it's um causing the road crew to have to go out and pick things up. And we're getting complaints almost on a daily basis of people dumping um down by the track, over the pull-off at Route Seven, uh the pull-off on Cedar Hill, it's, it's another thing. Um, so we were thinking maybe about some surveillance camera of some kind or some, something to maybe catch people and then set precedence and maybe put it out there so people aren't as apt to do that.
We, we have that ordinance that we put into that we put into effect
Yeah.
Dumping when we did the cover ordinance. Um
Like if they're caught, they'll be charged.
I think signs should be put up.
There's, can I, I could show you a picture of the sign that says, please do not litter and enjoy the scenery, and there is a pile of garbage right under it.
I think the only way that we're going to stop this, my personal opinion, or at least curb it a little bit. I don't think we're ever going to stop it. I think if we had some cellular trail cameras set up, and, and I think they're going to have to be set up on lock boxes, and they're going to have to be set up in an elevated position, which may mean that we have to bring in somebody to put them up.
Better ladder with us.
And um the cellular cameras are, I have, I can't tell you how many of them I have. They're pretty effective. They're pretty clear. They, they send some really clear pictures. Some are better than others. Um, the, the initial cost is not huge. Um, a, a decent cellular trail cam or whatever cellular camera is probably a hundred and fifty bucks. You ever take, the, the thing about those is sometimes the plans, the, the service plans are where you get really nailed on some of them. Yeah, that, that can become expensive to a certain degree. But what is the expense of having seven mattresses dumped and five televisions? And when you drive down Route Seven, go seven south and look on Barrington Road at the one pull-off and look at five yards, four, four to five yards of garbage dumped over on that pull-off?
And, and we're paying during Green Up Day. If it's cleaned up or if people clean it up, they bring it to the dump.
We gotta pay
We're paying for it anyways.
Or we got, if our crew goes out.
To say, you, you just say the devil's advocate, the other side of it is, uh, uh, I guess twofold. One is we're assuming that the trail cam is going to stop it. Right? So we're, we're looking at how much we're paying over here, and the trail cam is going to, it might be true, that's best case. It might be that, uh, you know, people in black masks do it in the middle of the night.
You're absolutely true, Bob. I mean, there's, there's
The sad thing is if it works in that site, it might be a whack-a-mole. The, the, the trail cam at this site caused them to dump at this site instead.
And that's
You have to rotate.
Just a caution. I, I wouldn't be
No, there's no
Do it with some uh, but you know, on kind of a trial basis and doing it limited, like maybe at the beach, maybe at the one or two, see if it's working and then
And come back with research numbers.
I'd say maybe three cameras to start out with, unless they've got a deal. I mean, because some of those places
Some of them, you know, you buy four and you get them, you know, the, you get a hundred and fifty or a hundred and seventy-five dollar camera and you buy four of them and you get them instead of a hundred and seventy-five a piece, they give them to you for eighty.
Right.
One of the things you think about though, I did the same, along the same lines, right? So if you're, you're talking like Route Seven where that pull-off is and a couple of other places. If you, if we, if we're effective at shutting those off, you're going to get a lot more in residential areas and on people's private property.
Well, as we get complaints, then we can shut, but the goal is if we can, if we are able to get enough evidence in the sheriff's department. Boom, hopefully.
Hopefully you can actually catch somebody in the
All right. I don't think it's going to take too many times
Yeah.
You actually catch somebody. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we're never going to stop it.
And if we post a picture on the Powell's site we'll get our Powell residents to put a little peer pressure on the people that are dumping, possibly.
Yeah.
Self policing.
It's Powell residents.
Self, self policing, yes. If it's Powell residents.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent convinced
You know
That it's, that it's all Powell residents that are dumping here.
Well, yeah, I can tell you.
Tearing up Brown's Field. I had a lot of Massachusetts plates, a lot of people that were from Arlington and Shasberry when I took and run the plate, so.
Yep, that's a, and the same is true up on, you know, up on the dirt roads. I know that when I see them or when we see them, it's
Especially the roads there, like where you live, connected to Bennington and
Yes.
Yeah.
They're coming over into Powell, dumping their stuff off and then going back.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Hannah.
I'm assuming the other towns like has had some other problems, like maybe if we did some research and found out if any other towns tried it and if they just experienced the trash being put somewhere else, if it really did cut down on the trash being dumped. I'm sure somebody's had to have
That's a really good suggestion.
That's a great suggestion, and I think, so to expand on both of your suggestions, let's do some research. Let's bring it back to our board meeting on the twenty-eighth. And then we can act on it, because I think, I think you both have some really great points.
I think it can coincide with the um garbage trash ordinance that uh Planning Commission is working on to try to really clean up some of those high trash areas that people are really um sick of looking at.
Well, that's why we
I'm sick of them. We're all sick of them.
I mean, that's why we
Is everybody in agreement with that? I'm not a big table person, but I think, I think bringing it back to twenty-eighth with some research is a, is a really great idea on both from all, from all ends. We can research out the cost and, and you know, what, what a plan or, you know, have some different options. We can research yours, Alana, you know.
Possible solar ones.
Yeah, yeah, the solar ones, you're probably ready to go.
Yeah.
I've got a few of them that work nice, so.
And do we have a budget line item that this will go to?
Well, I'm, no, but I was thinking, you know, um, I believe the Planning Commission is going to ask for some Arba money for cleanup of some high garbage areas in town, so maybe we could sort of do like a combination project.
Well, I think it coincides with I don't know if I think, I know it coincides with what the Planning Commission is trying to do with their trash ordinance for sure right now. And, and I think now is the time to try to I don't know if we'll ever right the ship, but we can at least get it
Slow it down.
Yeah, partway back up.
You know, it is, uh, from my memory, being four or five years old back in the sixties, it was happening then too.
It's
It's always There's been some
Yeah, it's, you know, the only, the only difference is at this point, the um locations have changed.
Yeah.
It's, it's still, you know
Still happening, just different locations.
Yeah.
Well, that, and that was my fear, was the, the whack-a-mole project. Um, it's, it's like, it's almost like something you go in at a very high cost to shut it down everywhere. Or it's just whack-a-mole, or it's a
Rebecca's up on the planning grant. I think, well, so we'll bring you back to twenty-eight with your, with the research from Tara and Hannah, if anyone's in agreement.
And coordinate with the Planning Commission because they're working on, yeah, at least working on the junk ordinance and see if there's any synergies there. I'm not sure if there is or not.
Okay.
The municipal planning grant is Rebecca.
Yeah, I don't know if she really has much to say about it. Um
She's coming, I think, uh
Speak with Johnny.
You're all good. What's up?
The municipal planning grant.
Oh, well
Do you want to see it?
Well
So, was that, was that you?
She put it on.
I'm sorry.
But
I apologize.
We've already had a conversation about it because um I, you remember last year, we're only allowed to apply for one municipal planning grant per um year, and last year Parks and Rec was ready to apply for it. We had a plan and we put it aside so the Planning Commission could instead apply, and we said we would do it next year. So this year is Parks and Rec's year to apply for the municipal planning grant, and it is for planning the town green area, which does include like um not just the park, but the entire, this entire little district right here. So Parks and Rec has some plans for that. So that's um, she put it on because I think that, because they reached out to make sure that the town knew that they were coming up again. And so that's why she put it on the agenda, but we've had conversations since then.
She said that it was a grant that was discussed last year that there was, they ran out of money for.
Well, I can call her and talk to her about what it is, but I, I think that we need, because we didn't get it. We didn't get the grant last year.
Right, and it was like the first year that municipal planning grant wasn't a rubber stamp.
Right.
Yes.
And uh, but the municipal planning grant itself has traditionally been used by planning commissions for things like writing the town plan and things of that sort. We were hoping
And bylaws.
Economic
Right, but uh, and we were hoping to get that uh used last year and didn't get the, uh, well, the grant wasn't available.
No, we weren't awarded it. We applied.
Uh, uh, right, but the point being is it wasn't a, it wasn't a rubber stamp anymore.
No.
It was a, and it was very few, a very small percentage of the applications got, um, if I don't remember what it was, but it was something like ten or fifteen or twenty-five percent of the people who applied actually got the grant. So seventy-five plus did not.
Yeah.
Um, at the time, we had asked the Planning Commission to go back and take a look at whether or not we could find an area for industrial in, in, in Powell.
Right.
Um, and, and to be clear, just to, to stifle the, the social media
Not on farms.
Yeah, we, we were not looking to, to take somebody's farmland away. That was not the request. We have to say was find an area in Powell that's suitable for industrial should we get the opportunity. Um, that was it. And I, but now I think what I'm hearing is that we can apply again, but it's, it's, it's one or the other. I mean, we only get one municipal, municipal planning grant, so the question then is there another, is, are there other grants that could serve all purposes? I think, I think you started down that path.
Well, what I was saying is that, is that, you know, last year we were ready to, I mean, a planning grant is very specific to planning, and so Parks and Rec really wanted to and it would also, I mean, it could be in collaboration with the Planning Commission because we're not just talking about the park and recreation. We're talking about planning for the entire town green for this entire, so it could also include economic development possibilities or whatever. And so that was the plan, and last year that is what we were told was that, you know, we were going to put ours aside and then come back this year and do it. As far as other grants for planning, I mean, this is the, this is the grant for planning.
And that is traditionally for a planning commission, not
No, not always, not at all, no.
She didn't make it seem like we need to reapply either.
Oh, yeah, we gotta reply. I'll, I'll talk to her, but that's, there's not Yeah, they're not going to just say, oh, here you go, I don't think. I mean, I'll give her a call and find out more about it, but um I mean, they do, they do reach out to people who applied that didn't get it, and then they'll say, oh, this is your, you know, it's coming up again.
She, you should speak to her because she
Yeah. Well, maybe there's some weird thing that we don't know about, so um
Well, uh, and my only point is, uh, the, the, well, uh, several points, but I, and I, and questions. Uh, the, the rec committee before we had a town rec committee, it was the planning commission that was planning and focusing on the town green. The town hall, the park, you know, things on Center Street.
Right.
That was part of the planning commission's purview. Are we, is this a too many cooks or is it, um, where, where does that belong? Does that belong with the planning commission? Does it belong with the, with the rec committee? Um, what we don't want to do is have committees either stepping on either's, each other's toes or one committee uh, the super committees where it's the planning commission plus the recreation committee. I, I'm, I'm not sure that, I just want to make sure that we're all staying in our lanes, that's all.
This is what she sent you? This is last year's application.
Yeah. And her words were, the program had run out of money.
Yeah.
Now they have more funds for the program.
So it's, then it's
They would cover fifteen thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars of the sixteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollar cost.
So she's literally saying that we're coming back and we're going to fund you now.
Literally. That's, that's That's what I wrote for select
Oh, so you wrote?
Yeah, because that's what she told me on the phone.
That's her interpretation.
All right, so I'll call her tomorrow and see if we have to reapply. Or if they're just saying we're going to people that we put on holds.
And granted, she asked me to seek select board approval.
Seek select board approval to go ahead. With reapplying or with just going ahead?
It's going ahead.
Oh, wow.
But
Well, we gotta find out if we have to reapply.
Yeah, we have It's, that is not the
So it would be, the total project cost is estimated sixteen thousand. The grant would cover fifteen, and so you, we would have to pay out of pocket
Right.
For a thousand of it.
Right.
Was the project.
It was for seeking industrial.
Right. And that's exactly what she said, seeking economic development.
Right.
Which, if I remember correctly, we had um
Requested them to do that.
Right, we requested VCRC, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, if, if we were to get this, we were going to RFP it and then you
But they had, they had a recommendation.
They're the ones who recommended to do this grant. They came in and they said, and then we said, okay, but we were, you know, Parks and Rec was like, okay, but we're hoping that we're gonna we had a plan for it, and then we just, we went for forec instead. We said, we'll put it aside. We'll put aside municipal planning, and we did, we focused on forec, which paid off.
Right.
So that's a good situation, but if this doesn't preclude us from applying again, like if Parks and Rec can apply again, like that's the question, like does this preclude us from
Well, I think, I think at this point, in my, in my estimation um, I think doing a, taking the fifteen plus thousand dollars that, if it's available
Yeah.
Which they're telling us that it's there, to do that industrial study
Correct.
Yeah.
That way, that way we can stop all of the, the, the speculation or the, the rumors that we're trying to take somebody's crop land or whatever else. So, so in my, in my opinion, for a thousand bucks that we have to spend, whatever it is
Absolutely.
To stop all the, the speculation or the, the falsifications, then, then that's money well spent.
Yeah, and it, and the Yeah, and it, and the goal really is to, really is to, to, to send the message and make it obvious that Pownal is open for business. We, we are open to the idea of a larger, of a employer coming in and, and, and we've got a place for it.
Right.
Opportunity for itself and it may not, and we, that may be the outcome of this stuff.
That's right, but, but at least, at least we'll have a professional opinion. On whether or not we are or are not open for business, so to speak. And it won't be, it won't be uh, Joe's Beer Fest that's giving us the opinion. It'll be, it'll be a professional opinion that's, that's come across and says, yes, you have suitable sites. Here they are, bang, bang, bang. Or, you know what, there's really nothing there.
Right, and I, I, I agree totally and I think that's the better bang for the buck because uh, you know, always for economic expansion. But does that negatively impact the monies for the?
All I wanna know, all I wanna know, and I can find this out in two seconds tomorrow, is um. Is, is, does this preclude us from doing a municipal plant, grant, planning grant this year for town green? That's it. And I, it sounds like maybe not, that they've just decided to include people that were discluded. So that's a very simple question and easily answered and if it doesn't preclude us, then I, I mean, that's, this is a no-brainer. You know, do the work.
So, I'll, I'll entertain.
That sounds good.
I'll entertain a motion to move forward with this municipal planning grant. As long as it doesn't preclude us from um, a grant this year for the town green.
Okay.
Oh, and uh. Not part of the motion, but to be, but to be clear, if it does preclude us, then we need to do, then we need to come back together and have another discussion.
Right.
Yeah. Which you should probably do in a special, cause it sounds like they need an answer, so we would do that next week.
And that's fine.
Okay.
I'll second that. Oh, uh, you were.
I was just looking for the motion.
Make the motion.
No more.
The motion that we, uh, we.
As long as it doesn't preclude us from.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrew, guys, still your motion.
No, that's okay.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
Um, paper of record, discussion, whether we change that or not.
That was me. I, I will present my case and then you will discuss. I, I know why we went with the other paper and it does, it's fine for some things. I have found since we've gone through a hiring process a few times, what we've had to do is double. Advertise because we don't get responses on job postings in the shopper. But we do get them from the banner. So it's clear that there's a readership. Um, differential and so I'm the one who brought this up to ask you guys to consider. Turning our paper record, a paper of record back to the banner and I know you all have opinions about it, but that's my, my. My recommendation is to do that and I take no offense if that doesn't happen.
Um, from, from my standpoint, I, there's nothing to prevent us from putting advertisements in paper that we aren't, that is not our paper of record. So if we're advertising for, if that's the argument, if we're advertising for uh. Uh, for uh, for personnel, i- it just makes sense to put it in the banner. Whether that's the paper of record or not.
But you have to also post in your paper of record, so it would be double posting.
Bits as well, like.
Several hundred dollars.
How much is it to post in our paper of record right now, Tara?
Several hundred dollars.
Yeah.
In the shopper.
To, or for the post, the shopper, no.
Oh.
The banner was the expensive.
Right, so.
The shopper takes longer.
Yeah, like we missed, yes.
You miss deadlines very easily with them because the way they.
For RFPs, that becomes a problem.
Very big.
For instance.
And a lot of people.
Megan had sent in an RFP for gravel crushing and they didn't even send the approval for it. Until, and it was gonna be posted three days before the RFP expired. So like that was a problem that we came up with there as well. I found that in the, in the email record.
But I also noticed that when the last RFPs were posted in the banner, we were charged so much because it was a full RFP instead of.
Just saying, come to your website.
Your ABR town website or something like that.
We itemize it down a little bit or summarize it.
Right.
And add. Go to our website for the full RFP.
Which, okay, I, so, so if we just sent to the banner, if we sent the full RFP, just so everyone's clear on this. I, I am and I think everyone on the board is clear on what's, what's, I just wanna make sure that everyone watching is clear. If we sent an RFP to the banner, which was a complete RFP of, you know. Five thousand, five thousand yards of gravel, blah, 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 versus saying. The town of Pownal is requesting RFPs for uh, the gravel crushing, please go to the website. That's gonna be much less expensive.
Yeah.
And does that meet the, the requirement?
Yes, I believe so.
And from my understanding, to warm meetings, they don't have to publish that stuff. You just have to have receipt that you.
You would never pay, except for a quasi judicial meeting, you'd never pay to put like a select board meeting in.
Right.
The banner or any paper. You just have to show that you sent it to them in email. They don't have to post it.
So I think there's a couple of things that we really can do to cut the cost down. One of them is to be more efficient with RFPs or.
Anything.
Or job postings for that matter. We could, we could cer, we just certainly don't have to put the full job description. They can go to our website. Where it would be readily available. Without changing our paper of record. Or.
No, well, I guess the, the, the point here, and it's a valid one, and it pains me to say it. But it is that.
Me too, Bob, I'm on the same page as you, guy.
We are.
I saw that bell.
Uh, uh, we, we need to, we need to post in, in the one paper in order to get the responses that we need. But the paper of record is also a requirement, so it's a double cost. So uh, uh, so by not having the banner as our paper of record, we're paying for the same advertisement in two places.
If you want responses, right?
So un, unfortunately, it makes sense to change our paper of record to the banner. But it also makes a lot of sense for our, our RFPs and our, our requests for employment.
Oh yeah, to abbreviate them, yeah.
That's right.
Summarize.
Cut them, cut them way down and, and if someone's interested in the job or bidding on something, they can certainly go to the website. You, you just, or, or they, her number's on there, they can call her, she's gonna have all the information. And, and if she's not available, Hannah's gonna have the same information and be available.
Right.
And the one that goes in the banner just ought to have the, uh, the, the link to the website. I, I realize that paper is not a link, but the website and then how to navigate to the details, that's the one that goes in the banner. Then it, it'll at least direct them to where to find the information.
Any, any additional questions, call.
Yep. But we need some, uh, yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to change the paper of record. Oh my God, this kills me. Entertain a motion to change the paper of record to the banner from the shopper.
So.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I say some, oh, go ahead.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Sorry, Andrew.
It's okay.
No, I, I didn't, I should have asked. That's what I was sorry about, not to, I gotta tell you.
I know what you're saying.
I agree with you, Angie.
Um, I wanna say something just as your press liaison, the person who talks to the banner all of the time. I mean, maybe we can make this another agenda item at a future meeting, but I would like to talk to you about how to work with the press. To make it. More, like some more representative of us and I know I've talked to all of you about this before, but. That doesn't just fall on the banner, that also falls on us to make sure that we are equally represented in the banner. And some of that has to do with being upfront with our communications with them and also. Being willing to speak with them and to speak with them at length and not to just immediately shut the door on them. I have found, as I have developed relationships with the banner, that it changes, it changes. It has to be a relationship as a municipality. I believe we need to have a relationship with our press. That's why I asked you to let me, I remember years ago coming in here, well, over there and begging you guys, let me speak to the banner on your behalf. Cause we weren't talking to them at all, you know, and for better or for worse, or whatever your opinions are, that paper reports what happens in town. And people read it and it has an effect on how people view, so that's just what I wanna say. This, my, as I'm speaking as your press liaison right now, that we, this is a conversation I would like to continue having. And just work on some strategies to develop that stronger relationship with the paper despite our opinions of them, okay?
And, and to be clear, that, uh, uh, that engagement happened. And in, and in a very recent article, was completely ignored, facts were ignored. And it just, uh, and, and, and old, old things drudged up.
Yeah.
Just because there was an opportunity.
Yeah.
And it was, and that wasn't a lack of information, it was not a lack of communication. They had the facts and we had engaged them in previous stories. So I, I, I don't totally agree. I think there is some hostility there and I think there's, and I think it's directed at Pownal. And I think there, that they have their friends and they have their enemies and, or their perceived enemies. Uh, but I.
Yeah.
I don't disagree that we need to engage. We absolutely need to engage with the press as best we can. But there, but the, the irresponsibility of it is, is uh, is, is really sticks in my craw.
Yes.
I'll, I'll put myself on the record right now. Of, of saying that I will have no problem engaging with the banner reporters. As long as. The, the banner has, in my opinion, and I don't think it's just the banner, I think it's papers in general. It seems like they have, is, just as Bob just said, they have this tendency to keep digging up dirt on Pownal. And I'm sick of it. It's time to move forward, the dirt needs to stop, the shovels need to stop, the rakes need to stop.
And it's not just the digging up dirt, it's the spin to create dirt.
That's right, a, and that's, I, for me, that's what makes me the angriest.
Yeah.
With the banner. And if they're willing to come in and say, okay, this is the way we're gonna work, I'll work with them all day long. And I'll go on record and say that, but that spin, that spin of, of lack of facts or, or, or.
Inaccuracy.
Twisting and accuracy needs to stop. That's where I have a problem. And I'll go on record and say that, and I don't have a problem saying that, obviously.
That was my issue, why, I was for changing them myself, cause of the inaccuracy when you spoke to them.
When I spoke to them?
No.
Oh.
If I spoke to them and uh, and even when I sent an email and I got lit. Chastised in a local store and I happened to, because I figured it happened, print the email with me, I said, come out to my truck. I said, this is what I sent to the banner. Is that what they posted? Nope. That's, that's why we, we got to where we are right now.
Right, and I, I, I know how you got to where you are right now and I guess that I'm saying is that. I'm speaking about the banner and the media as a reality.
Yes.
Regardless of our feelings about them and the reality of the effect.
Why we voted for it.
Right.
To make them.
Right, and I, and I think we, we've just, we've just shared our willingness.
No, no, I'm not complaining, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just, I'm encouraging a further conversation because it does help. It does help to bring a more balanced story when we're much more. Lequacious and the other thing too is that if we are more willing to especially write something, as you said. If they do print something wrong and we have the full context of the email that quote was pulled from, that's a benefit to have. That you're engaged in the conversation, not just shutting the door on it. So that's my only advocacy. I'm not, I'm not complaining about any decisions you've made or anything like that. This is just me speaking as someone who does this work, trying to just advocate for kind of like a more structured approach towards it.
I agree with that, I, I agree with what you're saying.
Oh, man.
And, but that was the biggest benefit from engaging. It wasn't that you developed, to me, it wasn't as though you developed a relationship. Because I've found back and forth that I've been very friendly with the, with part of those, many of the individual reporters. Um, and still that, and, and still had, didn't have the impact, the, the, the impact that you wanted. When you get the impact that you wanted, it takes, it's, it's uh, it is going back and forth to create. A public record that you can, just that you were just.
I, I'd say, talk about it all the time. Perfect public record.
Public record so that uh, so that the story then can't go in that, in, in that direction. But it, but it, it is a lot of effort and it takes time.
That's why you told me to do it, right? It does.
It's, it's almost like correcting someone's homework constantly. But anyway.
Alright, well, thank you. I don't need to go anymore in the weeds on that, I just. Oh, the ARPA is just, you guys need to take a motion to take the standard allowance instead of doing the crazy reporting thing. Um, the recommendation from Cynthia is, I mean, most small towns in Vermont are gonna do this. Because you don't have to do all the crazy federal reporting, cause it's a small amount of money comparatively to these other places in the country. You can, you take a motion to take your ARPA money as a standard allowance. Her recommendation is to leave your ARPA funds on an ARPA line. It's still your general budget, you can still, it's at your discretion how it's spent, um, but there's no more reporting, but keep it in the ARPA line, keep your own internal, um.
Sub, sub.
Yeah, exactly, so, but, but there, we won't need to report that anywhere, so we just need a motion from the board. To, to take the, the ARPA money as a standard allowance and then we can do that.
I make a motion that we take the ARPA money as a standard allowance as it comes in.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Who's in my voice?
That's a good thing. No kidding.
People wanna know where that money goes.
Um, RFPs are gravel bid.
I'm out again.
We had one.
Let me know. Toodle-oo.
We had one bid, um, from Basin Brothers. I believe everyone saw that. I think it was seven dollars and forty-five cents a yard versus five and change last year. Uh, Joel's recommendation, recommendation is to go with Basin and to.
He was doing a thousand less, correct?
Right, he was doing five thousand yards versus six thousand last year, so. We made the right decision last year to do the extra thousand, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On, on Joel's recommendation last year, so thank you for that, Joel. I'll entertain a motion to accept Basin's gravel crushing bid for um. Seven, I think it was seven forty-five yard.
So moved.
After that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, town hall.
Um, we, we can't go on a town hall yet.
No.
We don't wanna forget about cleaning and IT, do we?
Sorry, I'm.
So, yeah.
I didn't have that written down there.
RFPs, kind of grouped them all together, cause there were so many.
Oh, okay.
You have them in your packets.
Yeah.
So we only got one for IT and it's the same company that does the school systems. Uh, what's the name? Email came from Adam Suzor.
So the price, is that less or more than what we pay now?
It, I believe is more because um, Chuck is not charging a. He, he charges a project cost, which is different than how this company tops it up. This company does it um, by workstation. And they have it quoted at twenty-five workstations, but we don't have anywhere near that. I think we have ten.
But are they? Do it as a rental type thing or?
Um, definitely, so, build at a flat rate and unlimited basis. This is a pricing model. That one right there, yeah, yeah, that's IT. The only thing we got for IT. Chuck did not provide us another bid. And this has, this is everything they sent me, so this has like their. So I, my question was, when we go out on RFPs and we only get one. Um, is it okay to then research some other companies as well? Reach out to say two more?
It is, was this.
We get three?
Which one are we talking about?
IT.
IT, we're talking about IT, okay.
Yeah. So we only got the one.
But yeah, we can, we can absolutely uh, say that uh, we, we wanna do a little bit more budget shopping if we want.
Like Hannah and I could research a couple more companies.
Yeah.
Check with Bennett and Shasfer and see who they have.
Yeah, and see whatever.
Or even Waynes Town, and maybe, you know, reach out to that company that they use.
Definitely, that's what I'm thinking, a better place to go with this, because we've only got the one and it's. It's higher than what we're used to.
I was, oh, it's okay.
It was for twenty-five stations, but still.
I think we should, I think we should um, allow Hannah and Tara.
Absolutely.
To reach out to some.
And bring it back to us for next meeting.
Yeah, and bring it back to us for twenty-eight for the IT.
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree.
So the other one was the cleaning and I think we have three. I have one from Roger Boudreaux, who is the person who's been doing it on the weekends, the old place and here. Priscilla Maxon, she gave a rate of twenty-five an hour, estimated at three to four hours weekly. Or five weekly at four to six hours.
And I just have a question. Are we purchasing everything now for them to use?
No. Roger brings his own.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I was just asking.
Yeah. And she, Priscilla does not wanna purchase the stuff. She would want them here.
Right.
Um, and then there is a Brian Bushy, a hundred and sixty-five dollars per clean. It's the aim to clean LLC.
He dances.
Sorry, Amy Bushy is the owner. The email came through from Brian.
Would it make sense for, I think you and I to maybe talk to Joel about perhaps using using somebody on his team? Because I think he's he hires part-time employees on a pretty regular basis to roll that in. And he's also got the structure for personnel and other things. We might be able to combine some of this and save some money.
And it's that's actually under the new town hall discussion, though. We can have that now as a RFP discussion. Because it's a handyman. We were you guys had discussed going out to bid for handyman or hiring a position. But they could, you're right, do the cleaning as well.
So you're talking probably a utility position.
I think we wanna or and even if it wasn't a full cleaning, it would reduce the scope of the it could reduce the scope of the cleaning RFP.
I agree with you, Bob, because because on Joel and I had a discussion out here in the driveway one day, a couple of weeks ago, about that. Exact thing about where now with um and it was more or less geared towards winter maintenance. Our of, you know, now we have a significantly larger area to plow and maintain. Town office wise, whereas the town crew is gonna be delayed getting here to open up the town office, really. Where we would use a handyman or whatever you wanted to call it, where Joel, use him as well after they got. Because we do contract out exactly as you said, you know, we bring it. He brings in extra help on big storms or whatever.
Yeah.
And if we already had that part-time person, that Joel Joel thought there was enough. He could keep him busy. So I think we should get him involved in this, you know, cleaning up Sanders in the summertime, you know, ten hours a week or whatever it was. And they clean here and they do, you know.
Came in at six or seven and did.
And there's, you know, they could do the garbage cans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The parks, yeah.
So I I think that's definitely a discussion rather than go on to the cleaning at this point. I I think we can stay with Mr. Boudreaux who's doing it right now for the time being. Once a week, but I think it's something that we really need to reach out with Joel and brainstorm a little bit. I can I can probably do that with him before the next meeting, meet with him. Um, at his convenience, as long as it fits my time block. But I think we can we can work that out.
I work schedule. I'm not all that available. But next week is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I intend to take off. I have intended to take days off and not follow through.
When Wednesday could work because I have a meeting with. I have a meeting with the Cemetery Association Wednesday morning. Is that ten thirty? Is that right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. I tell one of your sticky notes. I gave it back to you so I wouldn't lose it.
It's right here.
I know it is. Um, so maybe I could incorporate Joel into into Wednesday. Um, or, you know, you and I, Bob, Wednesday afternoon at noon time or something like that.
Yeah, that that makes sense. Um, if you you just let me know what time and I'm.
Okay. Does noon work for you?
Noon works for me.
I would think I could be done with the Cemetery Association at ten thirty, be by noon. And then um.
Let's see, if that's a day off for me, then I'll set my alarm for eleven fifty now.
So can we reach out to Joel? He's watching anyway. Try to meet next Wednesday if he's available at twelve o'clock. Meet right here.
And if not, Thursday also works. Friday also works.
Okay. Um, this Friday works for me.
And of course, weekends on.
Yeah. Uh. I got something going Friday. Uh, Friday Friday morning would work.
Just so we're clear, we're going in the direction of hiring a part-time. Or you wanna discuss it?
I wanna discuss it with Joel. I don't know if we're gonna go in that direction, but I think at at this time for me. There's there's enough things, I think, from when I had a discussion with Joel. About that because because a lot of it had to do with winter maintenance. But there's also a lot of things that that person could do in the summer for the road crew, you know, such as, you know, cleaning up the Sanders and and just different odds and ends. Joel had, you know, some some work that would help keep our equipment in, you know, better shape too.
Beyond, there's stuff here too.
No, there's no, that's right. There's there's a few things. No, there's there's plenty of things and there's.
More desirable jobs.
Right. And there's also some, there's also gonna be, you know, especially this summer. With the schoolhouse being moved, there's gonna be a lot of things where it could save us money in the long run. If we had our own person making dumperms or doing whatever with one of our town trucks or whatever.
Call them a utility maintenance person.
We can name it whatever we want. It doesn't, you know, but I mean, I think I think there's a little bit of a need for it, so. You know, I think.
To be clear, I.
The town parks swinging.
I'm not displeased with any of the proposals we got. And I don't think the board is. We're just we're just looking for ways to save. If there's a if there's some synergy there and if there's a way to save taxpayers money, we wanna explore it.
Exactly. Make a combination type thing, you know, whatever. Do you have any more RFPs? There was only three, right?
I don't believe so.
The the IT cleaning and the gravel and the, right?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm gonna go back to my pile.
Now we can go into the town hall.
Okay, I think that's me. Um, I've been talking with Eric and he has developed this list of the phase two stuff. And basically, I think we just um need to discuss it if anybody has any questions. And he would like to be continue, I should say, continuous project manager on phase two. For me, it's kind of a no-brainer because he knows the most about the project and he's, I mean, kind of walk me through like where it's at. He's gonna be meeting with um Mike Connors to discuss what needs to be stripped from the building. And he's not sure there was possible that maybe being done by volunteers or something. I don't know if anybody remembers.
Yeah, there's supposed to be a lot of stuff done by volunteers.
So that was something.
I don't think any of that happened.
No, that was a figment of.
Somebody's imagination.
Okay.
Well, it was it was a great idea. It just never came to fruition.
Right. Um, so he can certainly handle that. If we make him project manager, which I believe we should. I was talking with Rebecca, that sort of gives him the ability to then work with the contractors. Instead of putting everything out to bid separately, he can then work with the contractors himself, which he is already doing. So that's one piece of it.
Let's let's touch on that one and give that one off the plate.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Perfect. It's just cost covered. It's right.
Eric's Eric gave us a cost on this.
Yeah.
Um, this was, I think, two thousand dollar.
There, yeah. Um, he charged fifty dollars an hour, but he only charged the town a fraction of the hours, which is very true. And I'll be honest, he is like a shining star around here. He helps us do whatever we need him to do, so.
I I have I have to say that um my my ultimate availability over the summer. For managing quote unquote, which I didn't do a huge amount of phase one. Eric did a tremendous amount. We we communicated back and forth an awful lot, but he ultimately is the one who managed this part of it. My availability over the summer is not gonna be. It's gonna be way less than it was. I've got two kids who are doing houses, one near in panel and one in Bennington, and I know where I'm gonna be. You know, so I think and and I think to touch on Tara's point, I think Eric knows this whole project inside and out. He already has his contractors lined up. We talked about him as project manager, the two of us. He's still ultimately, when there's a major decision that's gonna be have to be made, it's coming to the board or me or whatever. If you if the board so chooses to keep me in that position, if someone else wants it, that's probably fine with me too. But I think it's a wise decision for this board to spend two thousand dollars to put Eric as the project manager for for the whole second phase. He knows the contractors. He knows what's going on. He knows the prints. He reads the prints. He there's no there's it will cost us way more money to have someone else come in. And and I just I just don't have the time.
Yeah. And he knows what's required. I mean, he's already rented. Obviously, the condo for the stamped drawings for schoolhouse and all of that sort of stuff that.
He and he's already formed his relationship with the state.
Yes.
And, you know, those entities that we need to have.
Already talking with Connors and all that.
Then I make a motion that we make him project manager.
Up phase two.
Up phase two at the town hall.
Second.
Any more discussion than questions? All of them in favor?
Hi.
So included in your packet, these are just drawings of the concrete stuff that's gonna be done. But Eric, because it is all part of the same project, I don't know if we go with one of the concrete people that are already coming to do the sidewalks and that stuff. But one decision I need you to make is whether we're going to rent the propane tank or we're going to buy the propane tank. And you have your quotes. You notice the top one is a tank full of gas. You look down. Purchase price to purchase it is eighty-seven oh two fifty-three. To rent it.
Four twenty-five a year.
Might be a monthly.
That's materials.
Yeah, I think it's listed as materials. So basically, this is the two thousand five seventy-one. That is the total with a tank full of gas. That would be.
For purchase.
For if we rent it.
And then the purchase one is eleven thousand.
Yep. And they're both they're both from proposals from.
Blue Flame, yeah.
Okay.
And Jeff Miller is all set to do all of the digging and, um, you know, tickets. Spot ready part because I have to go on the ground.
And one for state.
That's only for one year, right? So the pricing, well, every year for the rental, correct?
Yes.
But renting it still will be almost five years to get to the point of the eleven of the purchase.
Well, when you rent it, then but you're you're limited to that company. So say the price of gas shot up and we wanna take and put it out for bid. But if we own the tank, we can go out for bid. That's the that's the only plus side to the owning the tank.
And if you rent it, then you have to go with that company.
Correct.
And they could be, you know, three dollars higher than anybody else and you have no choice.
Right, right. That's that's good.
If we rent, it'll be available early May. If we buy, it could be longer. It's another piece to take into consideration.
Is it above ground tank or underground?
Underground.
Or underground, yeah.
The only thing is ask about diodes, if you would, also.
Well, the purchased one is there's two seventeen pound. Spy brother, right?
I didn't see it on the. Okay, yeah. On the purchase one, they're they're including the anecdotes. So it just keeps tanks from degrading. It definitely wasn't on the rented one. That's why I asked.
Interesting.
So.
Looks like the the four twenty-five is the rental fee per year.
Yeah.
No, I don't think so because it's on both of them.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you're right.
It's the uh.
Yeah, you're right.
It is the, actually, I don't think they're I I don't think the purchasing of the tank really saves us anything, right? Because the.
The only the only thing that the purchasing of the tank does is is I believe.
Labor is the same.
I believe if we if we go with the rental fee, the rented tank instead. I believe we have to sign a contract for so many years.
Right.
But which would lock us into their price no matter what it was.
Right. Right. And I how many years is that? Do we know?
I don't.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
So so well, I guess it it still seems like the purchase is riskier to me. Because these are recurring costs, right? And the recurring costs are the same are are the same for the eighteen seventy-five, the sixteen dollars, the four hundred and twenty-five dollars and the two hundred and thirty dollars. The only thing that's different is the tax, which that that doesn't really count, right? And that's that's in in the purchase, it's the tax on the purchase price, which is the cost of the tank. And in this in in this situation where they own the tank, we're not paying anything for the tank. There's nothing on here for the tank, right?
Well, there's gonna be a rental fee.
It's probably a higher cost per gallon.
Yeah, most likely.
They have the same. Well, they have the same cost per gallon here.
So see, they don't have the rental fee on here. Why I don't.
They don't. Well.
But that's what he said the the fee would be for renting. So that's what's confusing is why it's not listed.
So um the I I think, well, I just judging from, you know, getting propane at home, I don't know if it works the same. But the the it used to be that the tanks, this is not Blue Flame, though. It's a I I use a different company. But it it was the tanks, the tanks were something like five or ten bucks a year. But that meant that you were buying their fuel and they owned and they still own the tank.
Right. No other person will fill that for you.
Oh, that's correct. If I wanted to change companies, I would actually have to.
That's that's.
Swap that out. And but that particular company that does my house, and I don't know how relevant this is. Is no longer gonna be renting the tanks. All their new customers will be buying tanks. So I'm I'm not sure how relevant that's gonna be either. So I I just wanna make sure we're gonna get something for our investment in it because, I mean, it's 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 almost ten thousand dollars more.
Well, that's why it's an unfair. It's not explained. The rental fee isn't explained in here and it should be.
Yeah, what's our what's our out clause?
Right. Well, not just out.
That's the self alone.
The fee itself is not listed.
Can you look into that?
But we need we need two things. We need both the the is there a rental fee for the tank and.
What is our contract?
What happens if we need to if we wanted to.
Because if we're gonna pay four twenty-five to five hundred dollars a year for the next twenty years, it'd be better just to buy the damn tank.
Right, but but looking at these two things, it's gonna be better to rent it because there is no rental fee.
I think.
And all the other costs are the same.
I can't believe that.
Sorry, I'm probably on your paper.
I don't believe it anyways.
It's gonna be true.
I have to make notes or I forget.
Yeah, it does seem strange, but I will.
Give them a quick call tomorrow.
I will.
I mean, the only thing, the only additional fee once you purchase.
From Monday to Friday.
And it's tax every year in Vermont's Surtax.
And those are the same whether you rent it or own.
Correct.
But that's just our piece of equipment owned by the town.
Um, the trees, I think we're just gonna have Eric kind of, I'll probably help him get a few bids on tree removals up and up and down the street.
So just so the board knows.
Yeah.
When we move the schoolhouse, we have to have some tree work done on Center Street.
And the pine tree.
And the spruce tree in the front is gonna come down at the same time.
Have to send out some letters to all the property owners because the trees are probably on somebody's property.
Oh, they're in the town right away too, so.
Okay.
They overhang. It's it's the road that we have to worry about.
Okay.
Same thing. We have to coordinate with the power company. And to take lines down and stuff.
Yeah.
So there's some coordination that has to go along.
Yeah.
This spruce tree out here under our tree warden, um, under his advisement should come down because it's a diseased tree. I my feeling is that we take the same, take it down at the same time we're doing everything else. it down at the same time we're doing everything else. Everybody's there here.
Get one bid.
Get it on the ground.
Yeah.
Um and then, and then I think we, at a later date.
We'll plant a tree.
Talk about what we want to do about planting a tree. I think, I think having a town Christmas tree out there or whatever is a really awesome idea. I just think we need to get something that's much more manageable too.
Yeah.
You know, fourteen feet or, you know, Dave Dent's had some prices a couple of years ago, but I'm sure they're obviously way out of, well, you know, that's something, get that down, get it, and, and then I would like to have something in here for next Christmas.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's just something we can cross at a little later date than have to done now.
Yeah. Reach out to a local tree farm with larger trees and see.
Yeah. He reached out from on three forty six.
Yeah.
Um so the panel historical society, they have stuff in the building over there? Furniture, appliances, is that theirs? Um and I guess so we contact them to have them empty all that stuff out.
Mm hmm.
Okay. And the flooring, he has to remove the flooring to do something, and I don't remember exactly what he said, but he doesn't know. Do we want to try to save the wood floor that's in the schoolhouse or put down what's in here?
Isn't that a historical question?
I'll have to get, I'll get with Eric on that. Um have him contact me. So I'll forget to call him.
Oh, boring.
Yeah. I'll forget to call Eric about it, to be honest with you. If he contacts me, we can talk about that and then we can make that decision next board meeting. I mean, my, my gut feeling at this point, I don't know without looking at it, I'd love to see if we could save it.
It'd be nice if we could.
Well, on the flip side, if it's going to cost us a fortune to save it and refinish it and do whatever, then, you know, this floor just looks to me like it's going to be a really cool, long lasting thing. So, you know, like I said, my guts telling me I'd like to save that because of the historical part of it.
Yeah.
But, you know, we have to be financially responsible too.
Okay. Um the, 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 one more new town hall thing and then old town hall real quick. The front door, you guys had approved us doing privacy signs, um the office doors as well, the stand up one in the hall. After long discussion, I think we all kind of came to a consensus in the office, it might be a better idea to shut and lock that door that has the window on it, the second door, the second entry door.
The last view.
And put some kind of a buzzer there or even a half a door so they can ring a bell or something along that, those lines, um with a secure drop box in that area. So if they're just dropping a payment, they can stick it in there and nobody has to keep going out to collect payments. Disrupts Julie a lot, um people dropping payments. Um so if that box was there, not a drop box outside for people to drop in, but a drop box that's inside um for those hours.
Right, the western doorway.
Yeah, in that area. And have, you know, a net door sort of established just beyond here, no public beyond here without.
This suggests that originally.
And this was, this was some pretty extensive discussion. I, I was in here for, for that whole discussion process. What, what that, what the nice thing about that whole discussion process was that it, it was, it was uh Tara was involved in it, Julie was involved in it, Ellen, they were all here at the same time um so that we could have that discussion where everybody came up with a really um the agreed upon plan, quote unquote. Everybody was totally on board with that whole setup. So, you know, I mean, the cost, the, the largest cost that we're going to have is coming up with a buzzer system.
We can do a passive doorbell.
There's, there's like with the school, there's a system that goes on the um computer so you can see and.
Right.
And the button buzzer.
Right, no, that, that's.
And you can talk back.
Right, there's, I think there's, I think there's a ton of options.
Yeah.
Out there, you know, but that's going to be, the drop box is going to be kind of an insignificant cost.
Yeah.
You know, securing it to the wall and doing whatever you gotta do there, that's not huge. You know, we already have the door in place, the airlocks in place. I mean, if we went to a double door, then we changed the door. But, but if you, you know, a Dutch door is what we're, you know, so the, the cost is, the cost is the, the buzzer system, however we came up with, you know, that, that would be the, the biggest costing curve.
And I wanted to bring it to you guys before we researched any of that pricing.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
I don't think it's as expensive as you guys think it is because we also did.
Maybe I'll ask.
Okay.
Uh watered. If that, he can put that, if that's something he can add in.
Yeah, I don't know, Jamie. I, I.
I don't know.
Right, that's beyond my.
Right there.
I, I think, I think, you know, in today's world, I, you know, I, I think for the safety of everybody too, um because of the situation that happened today, there was a potential seriously.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So that if we had that there.
That's, that's why we kind of designed it that way was so it could be secured and.
Right.
Yeah, somebody has to go answer the door, but.
Well, not really. You can have a buzzer system with, with your camera system. You know, there's, there's a bunch of ways around that. So I just, I, I, I think that's something we should research out and, and go forward in that part of it.
And the other last small piece of that was, it's very hard for people when they come to the building to know whether we're here or open or not, because sometimes there might not be available in the parking lot, but there's still people here. So we were thinking something for outside with ours and they make a lot of different options, but something we could just. Oh, no flags. Not a flag, but like a sign.
Open flag, don't shout.
Um just so that, you know, people know what our hours are and it's on the building, something, something nice. You know, the glass doors that you can open and change the lettering inside, something along those.
I've seen, yeah, churches have those a lot.
Yeah, that just says like.
Are you looking for like a eighteen inch flag?
With her hours, treasure, you know, what, whatever, so that we can each list our hours since they are.
Can you research that out to him, bring it back to us?
Second.
Perfect.
Last thing, old town hall, everything's still on over there? Can I turn the heat off, shut the gas off, um have it winterized? What do you, how do we want to leave it?
I guess we gotta walk over there and see.
Security systems still, we're still paying, we're still, we're paying for two offices right now.
Well, there's a, there's a couple of things that we can do, just so everybody knows. We can shut the power off because the um water for the firehouse comes through that building to the center station. Okay, comes, comes from that building over there. So we definitely can shut the power off. I think, I think it's time to open discussion on what we do with the building itself. And I think, I think what I'd like to do is, I haven't really thought about this a whole lot, a little bit, but not a ton. I'd like to, I'd like to open it up to the taxpayers and, and the residents in town. I'd like to throw that on the website.
For suggestions.
For suggestions on what to do in the building. In, in a suggestion box, create something on that, uh you know, on our social media pages. And then um bring it up at a meeting in um maybe the last meeting in May.
Yeah.
Could, could we have a realtor take a look at it and see what we, just a big ballpark estimate on what it would be worth if we would just put it up for sale? Because that's going to be one of the options.
Mm hmm. I think it's a great idea, Bob, sure.
Gets it, uh, we would get some kind of a good profit from it and plus it would put it back on the tax rolls.
No, I think it's a great idea.
Has the fire department got a deed and water, we water uh thing to that building? Or was that just impromptu because of the town had both?
It, it was, it that, no, no, I don't know for sure, Jamie. I, I, I was the guy in the ditch, okay?
Yeah.
It was, it was, you know, my dad was involved in that whole process, not me. I don't know what the, I have no idea what the agreement is. I believe there, there was some um contention at, at the time about why, but um from other people. So I don't know if there's a deed, deed right away agreement. I have no idea. I just know that.
The water.
Water comes from that well.
Okay.
That's, you know, over there when Laven shut the water system out.
Yeah.
So that's something we're going to have to really take into consideration because we don't want to shut the water out for the firehouse. Um.
That's why I asked.
I know. I don't, I, I doubt if there's anything in a deed or I, I, I think probably more of an agreement because the town owns both buildings, basically.
It's like with the church. There's no, you can't find any paperwork.
That's right.
Right. Agreement.
So I got a, it's more of a verbal.
Yeah.
Agreement. Sometimes the verbiage at that time wasn't all that good. I can remember that, but.
There you go.
So I think, I think what we should do is, is between now and what would our last meeting in May be?
Twenty eight, twenty something. Yeah.
If we stay in course for the second and the fourth, it would be the twenty sixth of May. Is that, you think that's a sufficient amount of time, Bob? You guys?
Yeah.
I think so.
If we give the, if we give the, give the residents and, and taxpayers.
It's.
Yeah, six weeks to voice their opinion. I think that's more than fair.
Than every one of the towns.
Get a realtor in here to give us an idea of what it's worth. And then we can make, we don't have to make a decision then, but it at least give us, give us talking about what.
Probably put out some feasible options, right? Because like, we're going to get things like um, suggestions are going to be, boy, that'd be a great place for a coffee house, but that's not up to us. That's, that's the for sale option.
That's what I have to remember. There's a marker like two feet away from the building that is the center of panel. And the same with the flagpole. That is a memory for the Chafee family that was killed. And that's why that was put there. So you just kind of remember the history of the town.
That's true.
You don't want that.
We don't really want to.
Yeah. Ow. You don't want to interrupt that.
Right. Yeah, that's true.
So just.
No, there's a lot, there's a lot of things to be considered here in this whole.
A lot of people don't probably realize that, but there is a marker. I think it's two feet from the building.
It's right there in the middle of the walkway.
Right. That is the center of.
That is the geographic center of panel.
That's right.
Can we turn the alarm off?
There's nothing left in there, right?
Um.
Yeah, we can do it.
Okay. And the, the gas, just leave that alone for now.
Should we say that on the camera?
A little late.
I'm just kidding, camera. Just kidding.
I, I, I don't, I don't see any reason to leave the gas on right now.
Maybe you shut the heat off.
Shut the heat off.
I shouldn't get below forty anymore until next winter.
Well, it's not going to be, it's sustained cold where it's going to freeze anything in.
No.
I was going to say Saturday night is supposed to be twenty seven, but it's supposed to warm up by seven o'clock.
It's not going to, it's not going to freeze the building.
No.
It's not going to drop down below fifty inside.
No.
You know?
Okay.
Well, you're not going to go, she's not going to open up the gas up tomorrow.
Right, yeah.
You know, she's got, she's got a couple of late nights, both of them. Had a couple of late nights this week.
No, we're late tonight. We're late.
I'm trying. I'm trying.
But we get.
Anything about a generator.
Mike, that's probably you.
Yeah, um.
That we're go.
No. So we had, we had an opportunity to, um, that's why I held it off from last month or last meeting. We had a potential opportunity to buy a generator to really reduce costs. Um but unfortunately, it was, it, it, it wasn't going to work. It's a, it's a two oh eight, one twenty versus.
Mm hmm.
Um, you know, so Joel and I went up, we met individual and um so we proceeded with the plans for the generator. Um so that's just a matter of getting the pad. Um we put the generator on hold that was proposed anyway. You know, it was, it was going to be about an eight, eight to $10,000 savings, but it just wasn't going to work, unfortunately. Just, just wasn't going to work for us, so. Um so we took care of that. That's, that's ordered. The generator is put on hold. It's a matter of getting the pad in and then Stan knows. Uh I spoke with him. I, I think I spoke with him the, the, the exact same day we went up and looked at that generator actually, or following, might have been following Monday, but. So that's, that's when that's at.
Oh, if we're reaching out, I'm sorry, I'm taking a step backwards. If we're reaching out to a realtor, make sure that the realtor understands because it's going to be an option the historical.
Why don't you get the girl that goes to the church here and that has um Hopkins House. What's her name?
Justine.
Justine, thank you. Do you know her last name?
Curry.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Great suggestion. Okay.
Yeah, she might know a little bit about the historic.
Yeah, right.
Stuff going on there too. Maybe we'll get the guy and add the militia that bought the old close school and come back.
Hey, so are we going to open up for public comment?
Yeah, public comment, please.
There are five people out there. Three. You really can see that number better down the corner.
We only got one person.
Anybody, anybody have any public comment? If you do, please raise your hand and we'll entertain your public comment.
Or if you prefer, you can take yourself off mute, just reduce yourself and start talking, just to make it, just in case it was a.
Right, just in case somebody couldn't raise their imperfect, thank you, Bob. Give him a couple minutes, a little bit.
Are you the one that has to sign that?
Yeah, there's only one part.
Yeah, there's only one.
Another, um.
Recording stopped.
You know, I can.
I can't even.
All right. I think, I think no one is a.
Motion going to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For executive session for personnel.
Oh, first, yes, sorry, for personnel.
No. No action taken.
No action taken.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.